Uh, members of the ULE.
Here.
Mary David Parkwards.
Present.
Members Sarah Zee Tockes.
Present.
And your boss.
Present.
Thank you very much, and we will turn to our representatives from the student union this evening to work on the agenda that we have before us and the reports you're presenting.
Hi, everybody. Just to remind you guys, I'm Eleanor, senior. I'm sure most of you know me by now. I brought Kamini Waldman. She's a member of the student union. And we're gonna talk about vaping and the progress that we've made on that. We've already given a kind of report on that earlier in the year, but we've made some more progress, so we thought we'd talk about it again. And then Kamini is gonna talk a little bit about our discussions that we've been having with REAL or Racial Equity and Learning, that organization. And then we're also gonna talk a little bit about grant forms. We haven't been able to focus really strongly on one specific topic in the past few months, so we figured we'd just give you an overview of a couple of different things. Yeah, so I'll start with the vaping. We've been able to connect more with Ananda Lennox, the, I don't know, Chair of the NPC. And so that's been really good. And we had a meeting with her in early January where we just kind of talked a lot about, you know, what some of the things that she's been thinking about doing that towards, you know, helping kind of the vaping issue and figuring out what to do about it and some actions that we can take. And then what we've been thinking about and kind of connecting on those things. So we talked a lot about potential resources that we can use. And she said that she'd be, you know, some of the issues that we've been having, I think, are the posters that have been put up around the school. They're often taken down by students who don't wanna look at them. And so we, she discussed putting Plexiglas over the posters and that she'd try and find funds to do that, which would obviously solve the issue of it then being taken down, which would be helpful. We're not totally sure how much the posters are actually having an impact on the students. I think it's really easy to overlook them or to make fun of them. But, you know, what, if it's available and we can do it, why not? So we also talked about reaching out more to parents and talking with them about the issue just so that they're aware and maybe so that students feel more comfortable talking with them about their addiction or getting help if they need it or getting a friend help, something like that, so that more people in the community are available for students to talk to. We're also, another thing that was thrown out there was a vaping text line that students could use or maybe partnering with like North Hampton area pediatrics and seeing, you know, the kind of connection that we could have there where students could get help. Also, a name that Ananda brought up is a speaker named Chance Amorata, who was a former vapor. He's like 18 years old and he had like a collapsed lung after vaping for a year or something like that. And so he was a high school student in Florida. And now after that illness and that really, you know, kind of scare, he's been going around to a bunch of different schools and talking about his experiences. And that may be, I think it would be more effective because it's coming from someone who is, you know, up here, someone who's our age. And so that would maybe be interesting. And maybe holding a workshop or having like a trade-in where, I don't know, you get money or gum or, I don't know, something where that would incentivize students to give in their jewel or something. And then we also talked about a social media campaign, which has actually been moved forward. And I think Rebecca, you know a good amount about that. But, so we, so two marketing, I don't know how much you guys know about this, but two marketing companies have said that they're, they've decided to like give their time and effort, I guess, into making a social media campaign, an anti-vaping social media campaign for the school district. And Ananda Lennox invited us or invited me to that meeting. And it was really great to be able to talk with these marketing organizations and share our opinion and hear the opinions of other people. So that was really great. Yeah, we, I think some of the questions that we're trying to answer on that topic is just like, how are we going to target the different age groups and really like make sure it's getting the message across to students who are, you know, 11 or 12 and students who are 17, 18 years old. And then also, you know, are we going like more of a route that's focusing on the students who are already addicted? Or are we going more of a route on like just spreading information and more of like a preventative thing? So, yeah, we'll see. And a couple of members of the union recently filled out a survey that have, that will help the marketing companies, you know, kind of tailor and make the, the, the social media campaign as effective as possible. So that's good. And yeah, I'm excited to see how that works. Again, you know, we're not sure how effective it'll be, but I think, you know, it's really great that they're putting it out there and making it available for us. And I think it could potentially have a much bigger impact than what we've already been doing. So that's great. And then we were also able to talk to the school adjustment counselor, Ms. Goodwin Boyd, KGB, and the nurse at our school to see if they're, if they are mandated reporters for, if like if a student comes to them saying, "I'm addicted to nicotine and I've been vaping", do they have to report it? And it turns out that they do not. That's not one of the things that they're like required by law to report to administration or the school or parents. So that's really good to hear because it gives more people, it gives more students someone to talk to about their issues. And if they need, you know, if they need help and they want help, they have people to talk to. So we are putting that in the transcript tomorrow in the beginning and saying, you know, "Hey, these are these people that you can go talk to." We'll put it in the bulletin and on our Instagram page. It's been put up. So that's really good. I think that's about where we've gotten with vaping. And I think it's really, I think we've been able to make some really good progress in the past couple of months. So hopefully we'll continue putting those things into place and, yeah, working on that. Yeah.
Do you want me to chime in with a few more details?
Yeah, I'd love that. Yeah, that'd be great.
It was pretty exciting and it was great, Eleanor, that you were there. But at the last Prevention Coalition meeting, we had basically two local firms, Marketing Doctor and Brigade Advertising, who both worked nationally and have been award-winning. And maybe you drive by Marketing Doctor on Damon Road all the time and see that sign. I don't know. But they basically have come together and decided that they wanted to do a public health campaign pro bono. And they've chosen anti-vaping and they've chosen to work with the North Hampton Prevention Coalition. So they came and they presented and it was pretty incredible that they could put together this social media campaign. But they're gonna base it on working with all stakeholders. So if anyone is interested, I know that Ananda Lennox is putting together a small subcommittee to work with Marketing Doctor and Brigade because they, and I hope students will not just have filled out that survey, but I hope a couple, I mean, the plan is to have students in there too.
Right, right.
Because you probably have the most useful information. And then with that, they will develop and pre-test and post-test this social media campaign down to the level of incredible minutia that maybe other people know about more than me, like what colors go viral and what color does not. And then they can just keep refining it. They can even geolocate middle schoolers versus high schoolers. So they are gonna, talking about setting up two different campaigns. What's appropriate for a middle schooler, maybe more around prevention versus high school, which may be more mixed in with that sort of addiction kind of health angle to it.
Right, right.
So it's gonna take a number of months, but it's pretty exciting that they're, and pretty generous that they're doing this pro bono. And, I mean, we must have had eight of them in the room.
I know. There were a lot of people.
A lot came. A lot of people came to.
And they were all like very excited and, yeah.
Yeah, it was really exciting.
And they are also, you know, very much willing and I think they'd like us to, if this works out, to share it with other districts.
Absolutely.
And get a more widespread campaign, which I think would be really helpful, especially if it turns out to be successful. So, you know, it wouldn't just help our school district, but others too. So now I think, yeah, hand it over to Kamini.
Do you have a question?
Oh, yeah.
Is that a question?
I have a quick question. This is amazing, so thank you. I remember in September, October, when we first talked to you about this and it was kind of,
"We don't know what to do."
Problem and what, and I, listening to this list of things, it's really amazing. So good work to you and your colleagues on the student union and the high school. And a question I have, and it's really just a suggestion. I don't know if it's a good one or not, but, you know, you took all that data for us with the late start and I found that helpful in terms of how much sleep students are getting. And I know a survey like that is a ton of work. So that's where I say, "Take it or leave the suggestion." But I wonder if the student union would want to survey students about things related to vaping before the social media campaign and before you really get going on this and then after it's going, so that you have some data to show what's happening.
I think there have been a few other vaping surveys done. Maybe, I know the one that the NPC put out wasn't specifically about vaping, but it had questions about vaping on it. And I believe there was another survey that was sent out to students specifically about vaping. And I'm not sure, I know that students got an email from Ms. Valencourt, but I'm not sure if she was the one that instigated it. Or, I don't know if you know anything about this, Dr. Provost?
No, actually, it was Ananda Lennox who came to us. There was an organization that was attempting to get some broad-based data on vaping by adolescents. And so we had gotten the information about two weeks before their deadline for collecting data. And so the basic deal was, if you are able to provide us with subjects, we'll give you information about your own school. So that's what that survey was about.
Okay, yeah.
And Ananda didn't mention that they haven't gotten the, as of our last meeting, they hadn't gotten the data back yet. But now that we're participating in that, like you said, we'll have some really good data on, I think, each grade. I think that was actually going out to each grade, so.
So hopefully we'll be able to use that.
Yeah. Will they redo that?
I don't know.
After this?
Not sure.
Mr. Gold.
Just a number of questions, and great work, by the way, was just that, is this, are you guys targeting vaping during the school day on school grounds or like vaping in all your lives as high school kids? Like, you know, outside of school as well? Like, is it targeting them?
Yeah, I think we're mostly focusing on, I don't know. It's, I think mostly focusing on vaping on school grounds and in still the school community. But I think we also have to, like in that, think about the broader picture. And, you know, if students are addicted, that's an important issue. And it's, you know, because they're addicted, they're also using it in school and on school grounds. And that isn't the issue. So I think that's kind of the root of the problem. But I think, like I said, with it, we're gonna have to look more broad.
Yeah, and I mean, to add on to that, I would say the education, like information sharing part of this that we are supplying the student body with, I would at least hope that they would then take it into, you know, other parts of their lives. So not just taking this information and being like, you know, "I shouldn't vape in school", but also then taking that a step further and like bringing it home with them. So, yeah.
Any other questions about vaping? Okay, cool.
All right, so the second thing that we're here to talk to you about is our partnership with REAL. And forgive me if you all have had connections as a school committee to REAL. I don't know how much you know, how much you know about, you know, what we've been doing. I don't know what Eleanor has said, so just shout at me if I say something that you already know. So what REAL is, it stands for Racial Equity and Learning, and its mission is to support and strengthen the school community by creating specifically anti-racist culture. So the union's involvement in this, so both this year and last year, we sent out surveys at the beginning of the year, just kind of, you know, surveying the student body and asking what issues students would like us to zero and on for the year.
Yeah, and I've talked a little bit about this, but just to reiterate, you know, for the new people.
Yes, so, and for both of the surveys, the number one issue that students identified was that there are racial inequities within our school. And so as a union, we, you know, we know that this is super important to address. And so last year, we started partnering with members of REAL because this is the work that they're trying to get done, not just within North Hampton High School, but within the whole district. And so we thought they would be a really important resource to use. And so last year, we met with them towards the end of the year last year and they had told us that what they wanna do is, they're starting with story collection for their mission. So what that looks like is, they have a website in which students and members of our community can go on that website. And they're asked to share stories of either experienced racism or racism that they have seen within our district. And to add on to that, not just racism that they've seen or experienced, but also what, you know, in their opinion, a district and a community, therefore, without racism could look like, just sharing their like broad overview of that because that's super important. That's why they're doing the work.
And even positive experiences too.
Yeah, no, exactly. It doesn't have to be negative.
Yeah.
Yeah, whatsoever. So what we're doing currently, we met with them just at our past meeting.
Yeah, yesterday.
Yeah, yesterday night. And so they again asked us to do story collection within, you know, for students at NHS, North Hampton High School. And so we're taking an approach to that in which we're gonna start to share information with the student body. We don't want it to be forced. We don't wanna, you know, force this, we don't wanna force our peers and, you know, teachers, therefore, to tell their own stories, especially when you're asking a minority to share their experiences. So what we've decided to do is just kind of a broad, like information sharing. So putting that, like in all forms of media that the students get within our school. And so just, just putting the information about how to contact REAL.
Yeah, saying, "This is REAL. This is what it is. This is their mission."
Mm-hmm, exactly.
You know, if there's their website and they are asking for story collection or, you know, or they would like to share stories. And so just, you know, providing that information, hopefully so students who do want to share their story can have that information available to them. And instead of just asking, "Please go on this website and share your story", because, you know, they're very personal and we don't wanna, you know, force them.
And just to be able to have this resource in the back of their minds. You know, they might not have a story then at that point, but they might later on. Or they might have a peer who they think REAL would be a helpful resource for. And so just, you know, getting that information out there, we think is super, super important to start with. Another idea was brought up at our meeting last night. We have a social justice week coming up in March.
Yeah, I believe it's the sixteenth.
Sixteenth through the twenty.
The week of the sixteenth, yeah.
Yeah, exactly. And so the idea was brought up that maybe REAL during that would come into the school and have like a table throughout third period, which is the lunch period, just for students who, we hopefully will have information out at that point about what REAL is. So students will have already gotten kind of acquainted with it and been able to maybe go to their website if they're interested. And then to be able to take it a step further and have these people who come directly from REAL, who they can then approach and talk one-on-one from a member with REAL. And also, you know, the student union can be a huge resource to the student body. But of course, you know, if you're gonna ask a question about REAL, it might be better to ask REAL itself. And so I think the last thing that we talked about at the meeting was, so since REAL was started, which I believe was like a, it was a year and a half ago, two years ago?
I think it was three years ago.
Three years ago?
Yeah, because they had a grant for like a three-year grant.
Yeah, so they, so they've been doing story collection since then. And they've actually partnered with the SOCA at JFK and also the SOCA at NHS, along with our union, of course. And they, they're trying to figure out a way to present their information to the community as a whole and would like both student input, but also community input on how to present it. And so they're asking for student involvement and ideas about how we want this information shared, because it needs to be shared. So that's currently what we're working on. I don't know, Eleanor, if you wanna add anything?
Yeah, I think that's about it. I think they're, just to add on about like the sharing of the stories in a more public format is just, they're thinking about some sort of art exhibition or taking that approach to it. They're very, it's very, I think, in the beginning stages right now. But it's something that's, I think, their main idea. And they'd like students, us or other students, members of SOCA, JFK students, to work with them on that and, you know, participate in actually creating that exhibit, whatever it may look like.
Yeah.
Yeah. Any questions about that? Yeah.
So I'm assuming that the, one of the purposes in doing the storytell, story collection and then, and then sharing is to raise awareness of some of the very real, no pun intended, in issues and experiences that people are having within the schools.
Yes.
I'm wondering if you, if there's been any conversation about then what comes next once those stories are collected and shared in terms of if they have any plans or intentions to partner with schools or with administrators to think about either being reactive or proactive about some of those experiences that are happening?
Um, I'm, they, so we haven't talked with them specifically about post-story sharing and telling, but we do know that they've been working, they've had a member on the code of conduct revision. Is it the revision committee or something? And so they've been working with, on that and been able to share their opinions and have their views at those meetings.
And I think the idea of, you know, working in this code of conduct committee is to have a system in place for what happens when you're in school, when you're in a classroom and something racist is said.
Happens.
Or happens, exactly. And how to raise awareness about that, but also have a plan in place for that teacher to then be like, you know, "What do I do now?" And then be able to have a system in place for when that happens. I don't know, Dr. Provost, if you know more about that process?
Sure, I can speak a little bit to REAL. I was actually part of the meeting where they planned their original NEF grant proposal. So the, and I will say that they have evolved their thoughts as they've gone through the process. At first, the first goal was just to gather stories and to present the stories. At the time, we were thinking maybe some kind of like real people of North Hampton. I mean, again, no pun intended. But then we've, as we've continued in conversation, we've found other ways that we could expand their influence. So being a part of the code of conduct was, I felt, very important. I know that one of the things they've talked about is next steps. In fact, it's a letter that I think many of the committee received and we're also printing in the code of conduct, is being involved with trying to explain the philosophy of restorative practices to the community and to students. Because some people hear restorative practices and they think it means the administrators have gone soft on crime, which is definitely not the purpose. But having conversation about that, as I know, one of the things that they think is an important next step for them to take.
I would just add that I think it would be really, I think it would be really helpful if, once their stories have been collected, if they could present those to this committee and if we could think about how, how we could then respond in ways that, again, are both reactive and proactive in terms of thinking about creating anti-racist climates in the schools.
Absolutely.
So I think just lastly, and I'll try and briefly talk about this, is our grant process that we've been going through. So last year, we've, I've talked a little bit about this at previous meetings, but I'll give a review. Last year, we have, we decided that we'd start giving grants out to student organizations and clubs. Or I think we've decided that it can be just regular community members.
Affiliated with the school, though.
Yeah, 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 school community members. And this year, we've become a little bit more like structured in that process. So we've decided that we are going to give out a total of $1,500 per year to a variety of clubs and organizations in a way, and we wanna make sure that the money that we're giving will be going to, you know, activities or materials or whatever it may be that will have an impact on our school community in the long term, so that it won't just be, you know, a one-time thing. Although, you know, we are a little lenient with that because it's really important that our clubs and student organizations are just able to stay active and that's an important thing. But we would really like to focus on it being a more long-term, having a more long-term impact on our school community. And, yeah, so that, kind of that idea of sustainability is what we're kind of fueling this. But, so pretty much a grant, the grant process for a club or in our organization is they fill out a form detailing how much money they need, what for, and how it will be used and how it will have a long-term impact on the school community and benefit the community. Over time, they can ask up to $750. But we are then able to decide how much money we actually give them and if we give them any money at all after we receive applications from different organizations. So just at our meeting yesterday, we decided to give $750 to the musical production to be split between the costuming department and the sound department. The costuming department would like to buy a sewing machine and, because we don't have one. And a, like, fabric scissors, because we don't have them. And so those things, which will really be able to help the musical stay active. And really, I think a lot of the community sees the NHS musical as like a really beloved tradition. And so we'd like to really try and keep that in, keep that going. So that will really help. And then also to the sound department for body microphones. So that, so that will be obviously sustainable because those can be used over and over again. And so we're really excited about that. And that's kind of just a brief review. I think we're planning on having another round of grant forms going for this year. I think Model UN is interested. And we're in the process of, you know, talking with them and deciding whether to give them money, how much to give money to give them. Yeah, so that's about it.
Are there any other questions from members for this portion of the meeting? Thank you both very much.
I was just gonna say the same, just thank you. I think that's great. I think the grant, I think that's really wonderful. I love how you've used it so far. It's great. You're talking with the clubs about how to kind of keep sustaining them. It's important.
Thank you both very much.
Thank you.
So I think it's now 6:46, so I think we can move right into our regular meeting. Those of you who are joining us, the school committee is convened here on February 13th, 2020. Already done a roll call. We have a quorum, so I'll dispense with that. And I would now open up for the public comment period. No one has signed up for public comment, but is there anyone who wishes to speak in public comment this evening? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on then to announcements. Are there announcements from members of the school committee? Ms. Musansky? Ms. Bucansky?
I just wanted to let everyone know that we have, that the Second Annual Farm to School Summit has been scheduled and the Eventbrite registration is up. It's going to be Saturday, March 21st, from 9:00 to 1:00 at Smith College. And it's on the NPS banner, scrolling banner. You can click there and get to the registration form and it's free to attend, lunch is included. We had a great day yesterday, yesterday, last year, with around 50 people attended from all the different kind of stakeholder groups. And we've done, now that we have a USDA grant in motion, we've done even more around student choice and voice and improving, you know, what's happening in the cafeteria around local food as well as kind of pulling up that farm-to-school thread through middle and high school. But we've only just begun, so we'd really love as many people to come as possible and help come participate in the process. So that's it. Oh, and I also just wanted to give a, a thank you to Jeremy Whalen, who's done a great job of putting a farm-to-school page up on the Northampton Public School website, so you can find out more information there as well. So, thanks.
Ms. Fallon, Member Fallon.
I just wanted to let everyone know that we'll be, I'll be hosting a Division V meeting for the Massachusetts Association of School Community Members on Monday, March 9th, here in the community room. Tracy Novick, the field rep, one of the field reps for the MAC, will be presenting 70 minutes on Chapter 70, how it works, how it doesn't, and what's being done to change it. Senator Comerford has confirmed that she'll be joining us as well. And it begins at six, well, light dinner at 6:30, and then the presentation will start probably at 7:00. So I hope you guys can join us.
Thank you. Are there any other announcements? I did want to announce that last night I held my seventh Proposition Two and a Half Town Hall meeting at Ryan Road Elementary School. And my eighth one is scheduled for the Monday After School Vacation Week, Monday, February 24th, at Leeds Elementary School in the, in the gymnasium or cafeteria at 7:00. So if you haven't had an opportunity to attend, that, there is one more scheduled on Monday, February 24th, at 7:00 PM in Ward 7 at Leeds Elementary School. Okay. So we'll now move on to our recommended actions. The consent agenda that's on the printed agenda, we actually have only one item, and it is the field trip, trip request for the Northampton High School trip to Madrid, Spain, April 15th through the 22nd, 2021. And the other items, their minutes were not ready for this evening's meeting, so they're not on there, and we do not have any budget transfer approval. So I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion to approve consent agenda?
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. So all those in favor of approving the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, so the consent agenda is approved. Next, we move to reports and recommendations, and we turn back to our student representative, Eleanor Hardin, for the student representative report.
Okay, hi again. I think that, other than what I've talked about at the SAC meeting five minutes ago, I, we've had, I think, just some more conversations about, you know, what, what I talked about and just brief things. And then we've also had some meetings with people, and one being Laura Fallon. So myself and Willis Sipple, our president, met yesterday with Laura Fallon to talk about the position that was proposed by Lori, Lonnie, sorry, Lonnie Kaufman at the last meeting of a, like a student, a school committee liaison to the student union. And so we just kind of shared our opinions with Laura Fallon about that. That was a great meeting. And then we, I also wanted to mention that a few members of the school, the student union, there's so many groups, the student union have separately met with members of the administration to talk about the student death that just recently happened at our school. I don't really want to talk too much about those meetings, but I just wanted to let you all know that members of the union have been talking with administration about what's going on and about that. Other than that, I think that's pretty much it. Like I was saying, in March, there'll be the Social Justice Week coming up, and the musical is coming up. I know spring sports are starting today, and I just had my tennis meeting yesterday with, yeah, the tennis coach, and that was fun. And so I think it'll be, yeah, it's, we're getting, we're getting there, almost to the end of the year, it feels like. So that's about it.
Excellent. Thank you so much, Eleanor. Next, we have a vote on the agenda. This is a vote to accept the Northampton Education Foundation's donation from their, any SOS Book Fund. Member Kaufman is not able to be with, with us this evening due to illness, but this, as some of you may know, is the funds that are collected as part of the, partially the census, as well as the plant sale each year, and it's distributed on a formula basis to all the schools for the purchase of books and other learning materials. The amount of the gift to the schools this year through the SOS Book Fund is $19,502, and I would entertain a motion to accept that donation from NEF.
Motion to accept the donation from NEF for the SOS Book Fund.
Okay.
Second.
Okay. So there's a motion seconded to accept that gift of $19,502. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. Thank you very much, and obviously thank you to, to NEF and to all the generous contributors to that book fund. Next, we have a vote to approve the Northampton High School Program of Studies, and I believe Principal Valancourt is here to make that presentation.
Good evening. So each of you should have a copy of the Program of Studies? I will start at the beginning and go through where we have made changes, and if you have questions, please stop me along the way, and we can discuss those. Hopefully, I'll clarify everything as it happens. I have to grab my glasses, excuse me. All right, glasses, smashes. Just have my sunglasses. All right. Looking forward to vacation. So that's okay. Thank you, I'm sure. Thank you so much. So on the first page where it says, "Northampton Public Schools' Mission Statements," that has recently been changed to read, "Northampton High School Mission Statement." That was not marked on your form, but I just want to make that clear. All right, so you will notice on page eight, where it lists the new members of our faculty under Counseling Department, we do have one new adjustment counselor that's been listed here. And then there's a new title change for Misha Beegan, which is the School-to-Career Coordinator. She is the person responsible for the internships and work studies. That's her current job title. And if we continue to the graduation requirements, here are the updates. So you will notice that under Wellness Education, there are currently, instead of the field trip experiences, we're now calling them physical education experience. This will happen in grades 10, 11, and 12. We did this year, last year, have what was, what were field trips and money allotted to field trips. And now, instead of that, we are allowing students to participate in the same duration of hours, which is seven hours a semester, to participate in a physical activity of their choice. So this can include participation in a sport, or a team sport, or an active club like Ultimate Frisbee, or the Adventure Club, or Hiking Club. It can also consist of a personal or private activity that they participate in, including a dance class, the, climbing the rock wall, or going to a yoga class. It can also consist of other activities that we will be offering throughout the year, which might be a walking opportunity with our favorite teacher, or walk with the principal, or maybe one day walk with the mayor, the superintendent, we haven't decided, but having some community outreach in those cases. And really being mindful of other opportunities that really sporty, non-sporty kids may participate in. So just dance, or things like hula-hooping competitions. We have 15 pairs of horse, uh, snowshoes in our gym, so these are just different activities and ideas. I imagine you might have some questions about that? Are there any questions about the wellness?
Is there a requirement for a number of hours spent in those activities in order to then count for credit?
Thanks. So the PE field trip experience was seven hours. It was a full school day, and we did those once a semester. So it would be 14 total hours throughout the year. And our integration tech person has come up with this really nifty form where kids can go in, they can plug in their name, their grade, how many hours they completed, where they completed it, and then they'll get an email bounced back to them that will indicate how many hours they have left and give them cheerleading, like, keep going, you're doing it, you've got 10 more hours to go, in their, in their email message.
Member Bucansky?
So, I mean, this is great to see because we started this conversation, the Budget and Property Subcommittee, so I'm happy to see it being implemented. Thank you for that. I'm curious if you think there's any budget savings in that, just now that we've sort of put aside, we've had about, what, $38,000 put aside for those field trips, but I realize we're talking about Program of Studies, so I can ask that. I'll save that question. So what's, is there any sort of, are you requ, is it just the honor system that they put in the number of hours they've, you know, spent in a dance class, or at, at the gym, or walking, or at a sport, or is there any kind of system of?
We can be very trusting at Northampton High School, and we would like to go by an honor system. There is one question that states, where did you participate in this activity and who might be somebody who monitored that? And they can just identify that. I walked with Ms. Valancourt. And if necessary, we can check in on those things, but really, we're just hoping kids do this for the lifelong process of being active and participating in physical activity.
And, can I keep going? Sorry.
Please.
You know, seven hours per semester just seems like too little.
I agree.
And, I mean, for a kid who's taking a PE class, you know, they're getting, or doing a sport, it, it seems like we should maybe think about basing it more around that number of hours. Might be not as many hours as that, but, I mean, seven hours per semester?
So I'm going with what we had that existed and that, and what was determined by the Wellness Committee and the, the PE Department on what was acceptable for the wellness experiences for the last couple of years. And so I'm basing it on that. I think we could open that up for conversation with those departments to figure out if more hours are warranted or people are interested in doing that. I think it's a good place to start as we ease in.
And then, last question, is there, and I know we talked about this in the Subcommittee, but will there be any additional wellness activities in 10th, 11th, and 12th grade? You know, it's so hard that kids take that semester of wellness in ninth grade, but what a ninth grader needs around, you know, sexuality, gender, health, all of that is so different than what a 12th grader needs? Will there be any?
I will challenge you to hold on that until we get to the wellness section.
All right.
Have some new courses. Is that okay, or do you want to jump in now?
Well, I understand new courses, but not every student would take a new course.
It would be, uh...
I'm excited about the new courses, by the way, so.
So not everyone would, they could, that would be one of the options. We are also, we have approved doing a Flex Block for next year, and so that would also be a time that we could incorporate Flex Block activities to do more physical activity, but also wellness seminars. There's nothing planned that we are making mandatory at this point, and I would think that's a conversation for us to continue to have.
I remember in the Subcommittee meeting, you mentioned the idea of doing some wellness, you know, expos or whatever, just tables or some kind of, something like that.
That is true.
So I really think that's a great idea to be able to try and continue that for the, you know, in a age-appropriate way.
Yes, yes.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Yes.
Hi. I was just wondering if, like, do you know exactly how students are going to be informed of this new, like, process and what's going on? I just, I know that it has seemed in the past years a bit hectic, the field trip program, and I'm just wondering if there are going to be any changes to that, or like if new ways of implementing this, then it'll just seem a little bit smoother, or?
It definitely needs to be a little smoother, I agree. So a couple ways. One, when students are signing up for, or registering for classes, which is coming up. We will, and we showcase all of our classes, and we let people know what the new requirements are. That will be one way we notify students of this new PE experience. The other way, Eleanor, is in Flex Block next year, we will have what's called Mentor Mondays. And on Mentor Mondays, students will have a, a time to be able to talk with their teacher who is scheduling them for their Flex Block, and that's where we could also say, hey, don't forget, there's an open gym, or today, there's like a hula hoop contest for Flex Block, or whatever it is. Got it?
Great, yeah, that's good. Thank you.
Member Boss?
And thank you, and thank you for this, and also as part of that Subcommittee that Member Bucansky spoke of. Another thing we mentioned that I just want to make sure the public and other students think about is, there's so many great clubs at the high school that could count toward this that aren't sports teams per se, like Mountain Biking Club, Outdoors Club, some of that stuff as well.
We even had a slight conversation about marching band being able to count.
Yes.
And that meets a whole different group of students, but I think it's worthy. Okay, moving on to page 13, you'll notice that we have made two additions to this page that's titled Colleges and Universities' Admission Standards. We have never had written in here that NCAA eligibility for college athletes includes having courses that have been pre-approved by the NCAA, so that now is just made crystal clear. We have put that in the Program of Studies, and often universities ask questions about, or colleges ask questions about integrated math, and our common statement is that they are comparable to Algebra I, II, and Geometry, so we made sure to write that there. Next page, Undergraduate requirements. It is currently a requirement that students participate, well, we made it very clear here, minimum of four academic courses must be scheduled per year. So this is just, it's usually advised, and we have just added this to the Program of Studies. We also took out a big section here that used to be called Credit Recovery because we're not running a summer school program right now. We had been doing some online summer school programming, but we don't have the capacity to staff that right now.
Can I just ask, does it define what is meant by an academic course somewhere, or?
You know, that, I asked that too, and so that would be something from the four core, math, any math, social studies, science, English.
Language?
And more than language, yes.
Oh, sorry, Member Lee.
Where do students go to get the information about how to, how to recover credits, if not here?
So summer school really is the only not credit recovery thing that has been offered to stu, opportunity that's been offered to students. Everything else has been made on an individual basis. So if we have a student who's behind in credits, they're meeting with their counselor. We have spreadsheet after spreadsheet that's monitoring and tracking their credits, so we are talking to them all along the way about opportunities to do that, whether it's through our Twilight Program, or it's through an online class, or an enrichment in the summer, something like that. So that's really done on an individual basis.
So is there, I'm, I'm just thinking about this as an opportunity for parents to get information that may not be shared with them from, directly from their students? And so just thinking about maybe something that says, here's where people will go to get information about credit recovery?
So, yeah, if, there's a student who's behind in credits, they get multiple notifications sent home to parents and meetings with parents. That happens through STARS, which is our At-Risk Student Team, or SAT, SST, excuse me. And so they know that it's... And so they know that it's happening, and when we send home a letter, it says, these are things that you can do to retrieve credits. You can make, you can, like, the things I just mentioned.
And then just the last point, it still has credit recovery in the table of contents?
Oh, thanks.
You might want to remove that.
Thank you.
Let Ballencourt catch up here. I just wanted to go back to the academic courses. And since you're adding that, just suggests that maybe it would, I think it would make sense to define what they are there for people, so that you save yourself from somebody arguing something's an academic course if it isn't defined.
Okay. Thank you.
It just makes it more clear, I think.
Sorry, just to, oh, can I?
Member Harden.
Just like a clarifying question. Is, so are the four academic courses, are they now, like, mandatory? Is it mandatory? Or is that just like a recommendation that's now been put into the program of studies?
You must have, it's always been mandatory. We've never written it in. And so now, because it's come up again and again, now it's there in writing.
Okay, thank you.
It also counts as a Smith class, or a dual enrollment class, or something like that. Those count as well. Okay. So the rest of the document, or the rest of the, um, the text here that's in highlights, it really has just been condensed or made clearer. There's no significant changes. The next page, 16, in my, on my notes, is the addition of Project Lead the Way. And we recently, which is a national program, we recently, this week, were notified that we received a $40,000 grant to support a computer, a Project Lead the Way Computer Science Class. We had also applied for a biomedical class, but unfortunately did not receive that grant. But we are super excited about the computer science. And basically, this is an accelerated class where students have the opportunity to earn college credits, and they can also, students of this class are engaging in real-world challenges, they are engaging in project-based learning, they're creating online tools, and workshops, and things like online art galleries, or, um, there's a number of different opportunities for making things like the automation to process and analyze DNA sequence. So there's just a number of different, real hands-on opportunities for students to participate in through Project Lead the Way. And again, this counts as an accelerated course, which we are hoping will, which we know will help increase our accountability data around enrolling students in accelerated coursework.
Member Boss.
Just to clarify, so we didn't get the grant in biomedical science, but we still have a path in it? Is that right?
Oh, yes. That was just additional cla, there were just a couple additional classes. Mm-hmm. Okay. So, um, there's not really any changes on page 19 in regards to IT pathways. It's just cleaned up. It just looks visually nicer. Sorry. No, sorrys.
Tell me if this is not the right time to be asking these questions, and I can, we can talk about it offline. I'm just curious about on page 17, which is not a change, but the rationale behind Smith courses, or all of these other additional college and career course options, counting towards credit requirements but not graduation requirements? Is this appropriate time to talk about the philosophy behind that? Or do you want me to save that for another time?
Certainly ask the question as an informational question.
Sure, you, so, can you just restate it, please?
Yeah, can you just talk about the philosophy behind why, behind the decision for the additional college and career course options that are listed here to count towards credit requirements but not graduation requirements?
So students are required to have all of their graduation requirements be Northampton High School classes, and taught by Northampton High School teachers. And so these classes are, typically, students enroll in these classes their juniors and senior year, after most people have done all of their requirements in the high school. The philosophy is that we, these are classes for enrichment, and we would like students to make sure, we want students to be educated and earn their diploma and all of the requirements from our school and our program and curriculum that we have approved.
Okay.
Okay. All right, so it looks like there's not, unless there's any questions between that page and page 26. The next section is on page 26 where there is a change in the course offerings under English, Senior English Options. So here, what's happened is we are offering some courses to be every other year, classes, alternating electives. So many of our seniors have an opportunity to take, to choose which senior class they want to, or which elective English class they want to count as their English credit. And we're just going to alternate those classes from one year to the next, so we can make sure we have decent enrollment where we can have rich class conversations, and it's not lower than 15 students in a class because it impairs the instruction. So that's every other year. Page, the next page, you'll see where it says Great Short Stories. That will be an additional class. The curriculum's not written, but that will be for the 2021, '22 year. We included it here. So as kids are planning and looking at the course offerings, they can consider what they might want to take when they're a senior.
Member Fallon.
The Great Short Stories, and I do love what you've done with that. And I love that it's presented as a no-homework course because I know that some students are really struggling to balance the load as far as, you know, whether they're taking this to a college class, or whether they're kind of taking a class that's a little bit out of their reach. It's nice to have this to sort of balance it. So I'd, I'll be interested to see how that works out. I hope it's in the way that you intend to.
Yes, and I'd like to say that this is created and birthed by Mr. Selfridge, so he can get all of the credit for that. It looks exciting. So the next changes happen on page 30. And next year will be our first year enrolling out the sequence of the history courses, in order of Grade 9 will be US History I, 10, US History II, or AP US. Grade 11 and 12 is World History, or AP Euro. So that will be the rollout. Next year starts where US History I is only open to 9th graders. There may be a few 10th graders who take that if they were unable to schedule that in their, their course based on other conflicts, but that will be quite rare.
I'm wondering, does that match with what's on page 13? I gotta like quickly scroll back to page 13, with graduation requirements, with this new rollout, or is that because it's, I'm just was trying to kind of match that up while you were talking about the, it says two courses, including one course in US History?
Oh, no, I need to update that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good catch.
Ah, hired. Okay, so page 31. Page 31. These changes here are mostly in regards to prerequisites, or which grades they're open to, and that has to do with the sequence. So AP US was never open to Grade 10, but now it makes sense to open it to Grade 10 because we're teaching US Histories I in Grade 9, so it would make sense for these students to be able to take that. And this, we took out for AP Euro, Grade 10, and now it's only 11 and 12, again because of the sequence.
I have just a question, also another clarifying question. The, so the, you mean by a sequence of classes, so, like, there'll, there'll be less movement between different grades taking different classes? So I know, I know right now, like, it's required as a 9th grader to take, what is it, just World History? It's changed since I was a 9th grader. And then US History, I think, as a junior? Or you need to take it, so are, is it just now that it's going to be, you will take each of these classes in this specific grade?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, thank you.
I just want to make sure I understand this. So I think what I just heard you say is, 10th graders used to be allowed to take AP European History?
No, 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 it was used...
That's only been 11th and 12th.
Right. No, 10th graders could take Euro, AP Euro. We took Grade 10 out, so now it's only open to 11 and 12.
My question is, does Grade 10 need to be out? Because what if somebody took US History I and US History II freshman year?
They can't take, the current class cannot take US, cannot take World History their freshman year. They can only, and the prerequisites are US History II or AP US. You can't take, you have to take that either your 9th or 10th grade year.
So it looks to me like the prerequisite is US History II.
Which you would take your 10th, 11th, or 12th grade, so you...
It doesn't say that here, though. It looks like you could take that in the spring of your freshman year.
AP US?
No, 1302, United States History II. Can a freshman take that? On the previous page, page 30, at the bottom?
Oh, I'm sorry. For US History I for class of 20... So US History II should be taken for Grades 10. Should be taken in Grades 10. And you're, okay, so that does not say that, and you want it to say, taken grades in 10? I, I'm sorry that I'm not.
Do you want me to ask my question again?
Yeah, ask my question again.
Um, under US History II, the last course listed on page 30.
Okay.
Okay. I'm reading that as a student could take that 9th or 10th grade, the way it's written there, I believe.
They should only be able to take it in grade, the current incoming class should only be able to take it in Grade 10.
Okay.
For the class of 2023 and beyond. US History I is taken first, and then Grade 10 takes US History II for AP US.
So, to make it...
So I can write in there for Grade 10.
Because above that 1301, it says only open to nine, Grade 9 students, so.
So we can write in there, only open.
This one appears to be open to 9th or 10th graders.
Yes, so I will write, have them write, only open to Grade 10.
Okay.
I just want to, are you, does that satisfy the...
It makes it work. Yes, it makes it work. I got it.
I mean, a follow-up question might be, is that the way the history department wants it? Or do they want 9th graders to be allowed to take it early and have access to these AP classes? I don't know. I just wanted it to be consistent, so.
Right, it's only open to Grade 10. We don't want students doubling up in history their freshman year.
Then I'm happy.
Yeah, thank you. I'm glad you're happy.
Can you talk about the, the reason why the history department wanted to get rid of World History?
World History remains. They take World History in 11th or 12th grade.
I see, but, and it's a requirement?
And it's a requirement.
Got it.
There was a division, but there was World History I and World History II. At this point in the sequence, we're only doing World History.
I'm sorry, could you just explain a little bit about why this, like, change is happening? Like, why are 9th graders not taking it in juniors and junior years or instead? Like, why is this change happening?
Sure, it has to do with the new alignment of standards from DESI, and the vertical alignment from the middle school to the high school, making sure that there's no repetition. And we are also incorporating new standards. So we're following the recommended guidelines of the Department of Education.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, Member Bucansky.
I was just going to add, they changed the 8th grade standards, and that kind of pushed what, what the high school standards look like.
Okay, good to know. Thank you. You were adding something. Okay. Our next... So the rest is more about what we just talked about in regards to the history standards. So the next big changes are under, in the Science Department on page 39.
Oh, stop you before you...
Yes, you can stop me.
I just wanted to say how exciting it is to see AP Government and US...
Oh, thank you.
Politics, that's brand new, right?
That is, and, oh, yes, that is new, AP Government and US Politics. It will, it's going to be based on enrollment numbers. Hopefully, we get to run it, but we're pretty excited about adding a new AP class. Yes.
I'm sorry, Member Lee.
Okay, so we're looking to see if we're just missing it, but...
Here we go.
Uh, okay.
It's just separated by quite a bit.
Got it.
Oh, World History?
Looking for the World History description.
Oh, thank you. Okay, so that's on page 35. And the reason it's way in the back here is because it's not running, because currently we will ha, we won't have any students who are taking World History because everybody has taken it. And the incoming class, 9th grade class, will be starting the sequence, and they won't take it until their 11, their junior year. So next year, we won't have anyone in the building who will need World History.
It's a little confusing. It might, again, as people are reading this and they're thinking ahead, it might be helpful to, because it's a requirement to have it in sequence.
Right, just a thought. It, the rollout has been very confusing because the history, the history requirements have changed over the past two or three years. So there have been an abundance of changes that have been hard to keep up with. But I am hopeful that this will be the last required change. Here's to hoping.
And also just to add that on page 30, there's both sequences. So the required core sequence for classes 21, '22, and then the required course for the class of '23 and beyond. So hopefully that will kind of tell people to...
Oh, no, that makes sense.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But because it says it's required, and then it's really hard to find the description, that was the confusing piece.
So would we alleviate, alleviate some confusion if it was included within the sequence with that note?
Maybe in the, the Core History Courses section?
Yeah, sure.
Sure.
Just for people to be aware, I, I don't remember when, but last year, we, as a school committee, did have a presentation on these big changes made in the history and why coming down. And so it was, it was discussed. So some of us, and I recognize some of us, add it, but I just want people to know that the school committee did get a fairly good briefing on it and was supportive of it.
Okay, moving to Science, page 39. We have simply changed some prerequisites on page 39. We removed Physics as a prerequisite for Earth and Science. We removed, there's no longer, we, we took out the word "and" and added "or", so Biology or Chemistry is a prerequisite now instead of both. And the same is true for Environmental Science. The next, yes.
Under Advanced Placement Environmental Science, it's Biology and Chemistry? Is that accurate?
That's true.
So that stays the same, the other two change to "or"?
Right, the only change there was just some wording. Page 40. There are changes in the AP Physics I class. It has, we, the current prerequisite is IM II. Prior to that, it was IM II and IM III. And in Advanced Placement Physics II, the same case. It was IM III, and it's now IM II. Okay, moving forward to Math. There's a small edit to the Core Sequence Recommendation. It states here in this synopsis at the top that it is now recommended that students do not double up in math courses in both 9th and 10th grade, unless planning to take AP Calculus in junior year. So what we found is kids rush through math, and they're doubling up in math very early on. And then they get to their senior year, and they're just, they don't want to take Calculus, and there aren't, they have taken Financial Math in their junior year, and there, there aren't really a lot of math options that they're interested in. And we are struggling to find, or students just, who are not interested in the accelerated classes, don't have a math that seems, that they want to take. So by having them spread out their math experience, they will have more options towards the end. they will have more options towards the end. You'll notice on page 44, there were some-
Sorry.
Yeah.
So I had, I had a question on 42. So I think this is new. It's not pink, but I compared it to last year's. And I just wanted to ask a question about the text with math placement policy, math. So I- Is it new? Is this new? I don't think this was in the, maybe I missed it last year. But I like, I think, for people who don't have this in front of them, it just articulates how students will be placed in a math class when they arrive at the high school. And the thing that I wanted to clarify is the final bullet. It says, "In all our integrated math courses 1, 2, and 3, students will be assessed within the first five days of the semester based on teacher observation, student engagement, and a pre-assessment to ensure appropriate course placement." And, you know, this is a place where I have heard from a lot of community members of just, you know, different approaches depending on which classroom a student is in. And I think this is very helpful to make it more transparent, to have this sort of statement in the course of studies. But when it says a pre-assessment, is that specifically a written something or, something that's written and not just the judgment of the teacher that somebody happens to get?
So things that are observable are student engagement and teacher observation, but a pre-assessment is something written. It would be a written test.
Okay.
Yeah. And I don't think this is new. What I think is new about it is it's in bullet. Before, I think it was written as a part of the narrative in the core sequence recommendations. So it's just, it was intentional in bulging it to make it very clear and transparent.
Member Seraphy Cox.
It's there.
Um, going back to the doubling up in 9th and 10th grade, are, are students doubling up on math, math classes that are, would be otherwise concurrent, or they're doubling up on, say, Integrated Math I and Integrated Math II in the same year?
Right. So some, many, hmm, some students are taking IM1 their freshman year and then IM2 their freshman year. And then their sophomore year, they take IM3. And then they might take pre-calculus their sophomore year. And then it's junior year and they don't want to do any AP classes and they don't, you know, so then they could do financial math their junior year, but then it comes their senior year and they're really struggling to find a math class that's suitable.
So I'll just offer that I took, I took AP Calculus in my junior year and I did that requirement. And I was going to be a professional dancer. I wasn't interested in going on and doing math, so I was interested in filling up my time doing other things. So I'm wondering, not necessarily that I want to discourage people from taking math, because obviously, I'm not a professional dancer and didn't go into that field very long. But, but maybe the, the solution isn't to, to stretch out that math experience, but to have course offerings that would be more interesting in the senior year. I, I'm-
We absolutely agree.
An expert on this, so I-
Yes, I, you know what? Our math department would love to have more course offerings for electives. They've been wanting to teach discrete math. They've been wanting to do more financial math. This would mean, needing more math teachers to be able to, to suit that need. And having more math teachers isn't in our, our budget right now.
Member Fallon and then member Busansky.
I didn't actually have this question until you started talking about all of this. So when we talk about summer learning loss, it's, you know, just a few months, not even three months. If a student's enrolled in the fall of one year for a math class and then goes all the way to the next fall and then all the way, I mean, is there a lot of learning loss that's happening that could have been avoided? Are we putting teachers essentially in the position of having to reteach a lot of what they already taught the prior year? I mean, is there some benefit to not having this spacing? Like, it just seems like maybe when we, when we talk about why students are struggling in math, it might be that they're, you know, they're taking so much time off in between math classes.
So there are people who make that argument. And, and there are definitely schools that have that same situation. We aren't alone in that with a block schedule and with semesters. And what teachers are prepared to do, teachers who teach block schedules and semester classes, is that there is reteaching that happens right at the beginning. They do an assessment, pre-assessment in all their classes. They figure out what students need, how they need to differentiate the learning. And they're already prepared to catch kids back up, because everyone comes to math in a different spot. Even students who go into math having a lot of knowledge, sometimes they may have missed a unit or they don't, didn't quite grasp a certain learning standard. And so teachers are really prepared to be able to catch students up and align themselves with whatever the standard is that they're working on.
Busansky.
So I'm curious about how it says JFK students who by choice and/or by teacher recommendation require year-long integrated math course will register for integrated math 1A. I, I get that part. But why don't we do the same for students who should be accelerated and be skipping IM1, 2, or 3? It seems like in that last bullet point, it's really hard to do in the first five days to have teacher observation and student engagement. I get how you can give a pre-assessment test in the first five days, but, you know, a teacher can't observe them, doesn't get to know them in the way that a teacher's had had them at, you know, for the entire year. Why not in the 8th grade at JFK, if a teacher's saying that a student needs two semester, you know, needs to slow down math, why wouldn't that same teacher also be given the opportunity to say, "This, this student's really ready to accelerate?" And same with a teacher in IM1 or IM2. It seems to me at the end of the semester would be the time to do all of that rather than at the beginning of the semester. I also think it puts kids, students at a real disadvantage to then have to come into a class late. We're saying, on the one hand, you have to drop a class within three days, but we're giving ourselves more time. I mean, it's very hard for a student to switch from IM1 to IM2, you know, a week or two into it. So it, it just seems like we should be, you know, kind of pushing that all back to the end of the semester, the same way we do with kids who need more help and more support. Why wouldn't we do that for the flip side?
There's about the same number of students who need an extended IM1 class as there are for students who skip over to IM2. So there were about 11 students this year who took a pre-assessment and were able to move into an IM2 class. All students in 8th grade are working and preparing for the IM1 curriculum, so all students are going into IM1. The students who struggle with math are still going into IM1. It's just a year-long experience. So everyone's getting IM1. All kids are getting IM1, even if it is a year-long.
But it's the same number based on a whole different way of assessing them. So those kids who are, are slowing down so they can take it over the course of a long year are being, that's been determined by their teacher at the end of 8th grade?
So the-
So maybe there'd be a lot more kids.
So the assessment for students who need a year-long IM1 is about being able to process and how much time and speed they need to process the information and less about the particular standards and the content. It's really about being taught the material in a slower pace over a longer period of time.
Member Voss.
So I was going to ask about this same question as part of that bullet. And just to add to what member Busansky just said, it seems like this needs more conversation. A lot, another bullet here talks about if out-of-district students get placed in an appropriate math course based on their transcript. And as you said, there are kids coming from JFK who are able to skip over Integrated Math I or, you know, what, maybe it's a language placement. But it, it feels to families, and I agree with what I'm hearing from many families, that if you could sign up for the appropriate class as an 8th grader, it, it puts our in-district kids on the same playing field as the kids coming in from out-of-district. They have, they know what they're going to take when they get to the high school. They're not faced with five days into the semester being said, "Oh, you can go into a different math, but it isn't this period, so you're going to take it next semester," or "You're going to get a choice of these three classes." And maybe they don't want to take those three classes. So some of them just stay in IM1, even if it isn't necessarily where they should be. So I, I just feel like it treats our students who go through JFK differently from students who are coming in and any student entering our high school, if they know the IM1 material, should be given an opportunity to go on and take IM2, so that they can take advantage of all the other great stuff at the high school.
So I appreciate that you started your statement with, I would really like to have more conversation about this, because I know that my department chair and my math department would also like to engage in more conversation about this. And I trust them as the professionals of math. I believe they know math inside and out and will have all of the answers to those questions and be able to engage in some meaningful discourse if invited or if they were to take part in a conversation. So I would love to just invite you or invite them to have that conversation with you.
If I could just add to that, I think I would really welcome that. And I think it's more than us and, like you said, the professionals, but it's also the families and the people who are choosing to send their kids to our schools, that we should be listening to the experiences and understanding how to make it equitable for everybody and give everybody the best learning that they can get. So I don't know how we, maybe Dr. Peres has an idea.
I guess we have to look at the data that might show that our students are not feeling challenged by math, are not excelling in math, because, you know, my perception is that all of our students are excelling in math and they're doing some amazing work with math and they're really engaging in mathematics. And our test scores are showing that they are steadily rising and achieving in mathematics. So I think we have a big conversation to be had. And I think we have to look carefully at some of that data.
Dr. Peres.
To support what we're both saying.
I think this is something that probably could be answered quickly and may not have to be part of that conversation that you're discussing. But to member Busansky's question, correct me if I'm wrong, but isn't part of the reason why the difference between students who may need an IM1 AB versus a student who could go into IM2, is that for planning purposes, you need to know how many sections of an IM1A you need to create while you're developing the schedule in the summer, as opposed to a student who may start an IM1 and then get accelerated would be going into an IM2 that's already part of the schedule?
That's true. We have 11, we currently have nine sections of IM1 and three sections of IM1 AB. And so that changes from year to year based on the needs.
Right.
And then we do have an equivalent number of IM2 classes, nine sections, so students can easily move into those sections.
I'll just second the desire to have a, a future conversation and to bring in the appropriate stakeholders and the math teachers who really are the experts. And I would, I, ideally include the math teachers from the middle school as well. Because like, member Voss, for me, the, one of the most common things that I've heard in my emails from, from community members is a desire to really look at math and, and a feeling that their students are not receiving the appropriate challenge in the curriculum. And so just an opportunity to have more conversation, I think, would be really, a really good, uh, next step.
Yes.
I think to kind of go back to the point about, like, encouraging spreading out of math classes, I'm a little, like, weary on that. I, I feel like there are a good amount, there are, I, I believe there's just regular calculus that you can take in your junior, senior year. And, correct me if I'm wrong, regular statistics, is that true? I don't know. I don't have the, the program of studies in front of me. But I don't, I'm, I feel like discouraging students from taking math classes in their earlier years may not be the way to go about it. I feel like, like encouraging students to take more math classes in their senior, junior or senior year, you know, and saying, "These are the classes that we have available if you don't want to take, you know, AP or honors level courses." I, I don't know. I, I think, based on my experience, the, like, regular, and I mean, I've been taking more advanced level math classes in, in, throughout my high school years, but it seems to me that, like, regular calculus and, and regular statistics and financial math aren't as encouraged to, for students to take as AP level classes. And I think for students who don't want to take AP level classes, I think it should be more encouraged to, it's, like, students should be encouraged to take just the math classes that are available in their junior and senior year, rather than discouraged from taking more math and, math classes in their freshman and sophomore year. That's, I don't know. I think that's my opinion.
So every student's encouraged to take math every year. I want to be super clear. And this is not intended to discourage students. It's intended to recommend that they, they consider their trajectory as a math student and where they want to end up and make, and to be mindful of which classes they are taking along the way.
Okay. I think, yeah. And I think it's definitely helpful to be mindful of the, the broader picture of, you know, all four years. But I think it, it's possible that it could be interpreted by students as, you know, "Oh, you shouldn't take two math classes in your freshman year." And I just want to be conscious of that, I think.
Okay. Tiptoeing away from math and into the langu, world language. It looks very clean. Everything is, everything remains the same until page 52, where you see there's a split between the honors Latin V classes. There are two sections. One is Advanced Latin Seminar and the other is Topics in Latin Literature. These run on alternate years. So that's just a new change. Then the next changes are, you'll see the descriptions on page 55 for the two additional Project Lead the Way classes. One is Computer Science A. This is comparable to what used to be computer, AP Computer Science. And it's basically a-
My question?
Yes.
Sorry, just-
No, no.
Okay, ASL is not being offered. Do we think it will be again?
Okay, I skipped ASL?
It was, you have-
In the world language?
Yeah, page 52.
ASL currently isn't being offered. It has, it has been nearly, right now, we're offering it as a dual enrollment class. And we have a GCC instructor coming in and teaching the ASL class. Students really love it, but they're taking it as a dual enrollment. We've really had a hard time filling the position for a .33, which is one class taught a semester. It's very hard to find certified teacher to do that for one class. So unless we had the ability to open it up to be a full-time position, it's impossible to run. So we'll encourage it as dual enrollment.
Gotcha.
But not as a Northampton High School class. So the other Project Lead the Way class is Computer Essentials. On page 55, the descriptions are right there. Again, what's, this, this, one takes the place of an AP class. The other one takes the place of what was once an honors computer coding and Python class. The next, page 56, the robotics and AI class. This is, I, this is, they wrote in this comment here that it no longer counts as a science requirement. It never did count as a science requirement. I'm sorry that that is there. It just, it's, it's considered a technology elective.
Member Voss.
I'm curious if any of these classes, for example, web design, do any of them count for the art requirement?
Wood tech does.
Yeah.
I don't think web design does.
I, I'm just putting that out there. If, I, I'm not quite sure which of these are brand new, but it just is something to consider as we add these, because there might, it might be appropriate.
The ones that do count as a class are identified as counting as a fine arts requirement or art requirement. But no, robotics and web design are not considered art requirements or web design. Okay, so page 58 is really just a, a change in some wording. And then page 60 has the course offerings for the every other year classes. So these are the offerings for 2020, 2021. Page 63, there's just a change in clarity in the title, Jazz and Rock Improv Workshop. It was just improv workshop, but that wasn't clear enough to students. So enrollment, we think, may have been lower because they weren't quite sure what that class was. So now it's crystal clear. And then on page 67, we move into the wellness education courses. And here you'll see there is a yoga and mindfulness class and contemporary health. This is a seminar class. It's going to explore a number of different issues. It's only open to grades 11 and 12. This year, Trish Armstrong finished her professional development and certification as a yoga instructor. And so she'll be- as a yoga instructor. And so she'll be teaching yoga as part of a PE class. And that's all that is new for wellness.
I'm sorry, member.
I hope you're volunteering to teach a dance class.
How did you know that my question was going to be about dance?
Yes. There is an amazing dance community in this community and in the broader valley. I'm surprised to not see a dance class. Can you talk about how that did not come about?
Well, currently we have one PE teacher and that PE teacher is also, the one teacher that teaches physical education is also responsible for teaching wellness. So we really aren't able to run very many PE classes. We run one a semester, sometimes two. And so within the course of the PE class, there are different opportunities for different types of physical fitness. Some may include dance. I haven't seen Salem Derby teach dance yet, but it doesn't mean that he can't have some guest speakers come in. Also, I keep thinking about the flex block, which is really going to give us a lot of opportunity to bring in community people to lead some enrichment activities, which could be all kinds of multicultural dancing or modern dance or things of that nature, which could be great in a flex block. So I'm not against it.
Yeah. It's interesting to hear you talk about dance in the context of PE because I was actually looking for it in the performing arts section. It feels more akin to me, akin to theater than it does to gym class. I know it's called PE, but yeah. And so just in, like in terms of maybe even like a creative movement or, or choreography class.
I think, I absolutely agree. Nothing would be more successful. I will ask Mr. Eldridge if he'd like to lead that. But really, he's the only performing arts teacher and, you know, he does often have guests who come in and do different things within his, his drama courses. But at this point, it's just not in the budget to have those opportunities, which is unfortunate. Okay. So the last edit or the last change in this program of studies is on page 69. And this is under, oh, it's not a change, but it has, it came up as a question that I knew might be asked, which is why or how did it get mentioned in the program of studies that the course for learning strategies was considered a pass fail course? And so that was approved in the program of studies for this school year. So it was approved last year and it remains in the program of studies. It was a decision that was made by the special, special education department and has been included on all special education teacher syllabi and on our website as being with a rubric of how students are graded for a pass fail grade.
Yeah. And I had some folks asking me about this and so I asked about it too. And I guess one question I have is are any other courses pass fail or is this the only one?
Oh, thanks for that. So yes, right in the beginning, page 16, lists all of the courses that are, nope, not there. Oh, okay. Right in the front, under the marking system and grade point average, page 10, it says pass fail courses. Students will receive a pass or fail, a pass for satisfactory work, a fail for unsatisfactory work. Pass fail classes are not calculated into the GPA. The following courses are pass fail, internship, teacher assistant, work study, tech management, and learning strategies courses.
So what I'm hearing you say is the, there was a process through the special ed teachers and the teachers who work in learning strategies that recommended that this be pass fail?
Mostly because the special education teachers strongly believe that a service, a special education service should not be graded because all students progress on their goals in different ways. And the learning strategies classes are really designed for students to be working on their individual goals. And so being able to offer a grade for students on how they're achieving their goals is really hard to measure. They're not based on standards or any particular curriculum at this point. And so it makes sense to be able to assess students based on their willingness or ability to engage in their personal goals and their special education goals and not give them a grade on how well they're achieving that goal. Because that differs for all students.
So just to share the perspective that was shared with me, which I am sympathetic towards, so I want to put it out there. Students who are taking learner's strategies are taking that as 25% of their courses, some of them throughout their entire high school career. And so not allowing them to choose perhaps to have a grade versus pass fail for this potentially puts them at a disadvantage if they're applying for college and they can't try to earn a good grade in one of, in 25% of their classes. And I guess when I read the description of learning strategies and my understanding is students are really learning executive function skills and learning what their strengths are and how to get better at certain things and working toward them. To me, that feels like something, you know, and I don't want to tell you all how to do it. I'm just putting this out there, trying to make things better for all our students, right? Those are things I think you can grade by asking students to reflect on, did you set goals? How close did you come to meeting them? And I don't see why that's any harder to grade than a PE class, for example, or some of these other classes in, in here. So I'll, I guess I'd again like to just put back, maybe there could be another, not this group, but a conversation about this with the students and the families that are affected by this decision and just have an open mind and listening to their perspectives on it. Because I think there's a bigger conversation.
There's always room for conversation, absolutely. And I, and I want to point out that every class, so a couple of things are happening at the high school, which are really exciting and as we're rolling them out. One is that we're really looking at how to grade habits of work. And we're also looking at grading academic classes and all classes based on assessments and the standards that are being taught. So even with physical education classes, there are state standards that are measurable for meeting those classes. And with all technology classes, there are standards. And so until we have a curriculum for learning strategies that can be measured, right now, we're just going on what is a pass fail. I just want to read you what the special education teachers say in their syllabus. It states, "Progress and IEP goals will be provided quarterly as required by special education regulations. Progress reports are not associated with a course grade, but rather are required by law as part of the IEP process. Learning strategies term grades will be recorded as pass fail based on the completion of assigned learning strategy tasks that focus on skills in areas of academics, organization, study skills, transition planning, and meeting classroom expectations." So I agree with you that there's room to have the conversation. I do trust that the teachers tried to make some thoughtful decisions around it. I too have had conversations with some caregivers and it is concerning that somehow the communication wasn't made as clear or they didn't feel as if they were a part of the decision-making. And that's always an important takeaway and that is always upsetting to hear. So there are definitely, there's definitely space for more conversation.
Mr. Messing was, so I'm really glad that we have the opportunity to have the conversation about where learning strategy fits in, how it's assessed. A lot of this comes with trying to separate learning strategies, the course, from the service, the special education service it's intended. So we talk a lot about the 25% of students' experience and that really speaks to the heart of the matter. One of the things that we've tried over the last three years to do is increase flexibility for multidisciplinary teams, for IEP teams, to make thoughtful choices about the amount of service and the nature of that service for students who need it. So coming into the 17, 18 school year, essentially outside of some of our specialized programs, specifically our intellectually impaired program at the high school, if you were receiving special education services, it was almost a given that you were getting five by 83 or 83 minutes a day of learning strategies, nearly irrespective of your actual needs. You can expect, you know, the burden that that puts on teachers to try and meet a wide array of need within that 83 minute block. What it also does is severely limit IEP teams in being able to make thoughtful judgments about frequency and duration so that two students with widely discrepant needs have essentially the same option. So conversations that we were having were twofold. One was, how do we ensure the logistical benefits of having learning strategies to service, the specialized instruction service accounted for within the schedule? How do we make sure we have enough sections? We can deploy special ed teachers appropriately? We can fit other classes around it to make sure all students have full schedules without some of these negative detriments. A lot of what we saw, it cuts the other way as well. Because just like we're concerned about students being negatively impacted about going to a pass fail model in the way you described, what we saw by and large for the vast majority of our students, some of our most vulnerable students were having a situation where they were being negatively impacted grade wise on assessments for receiving a service. So when we were talking about equity for, for us as a department at the high school, we were very, very concerned that students would be receiving failing marks for engaging in a service. That if we were to think about occupational therapy, physical therapy, speech therapy, we wouldn't be having any, any type of discussion the same way. So certainly there are, there's a lot of discussion to have about it, but the thinking was to make sure that students weren't being negatively impacted on the other end, certainly what we think of our most struggling students, you know, the students for whom we're trying to lift the floor. But also, it's a really concerted effort in line with a couple of other steps that we've taken last year and into this year to really provide more options for students with regard to executive functioning, specialized instruction, and still maintain options for learning strategies. Specifically, all the work that's gone into the flex block and providing opportunities for all students to have some of that flexible opportunity during the school day that doesn't require them to stay after, that doesn't raise all of those equity issues. But also to be able to make decisions for students. For those students who need 83 minutes every day, great, awesome. For those students who need half that or twice a minute, you know, twice a week, three times a week, whatever the case may be, that was really part of it. So the pass fail piece was one small change that was part of this larger to separate the service of learning strategies from the course. Because without doubt, there's a lot of logistical and functional benefits of having it associated with a class in the same way it is in this building, for example. But there are many more potentially unintended consequences that limit folks' experiences. So that's really where we came into it, certainly last year when this change was made.
So, member Voss, you had a follow-up?
I just have a question about something. Yeah. So do some students who aren't taking learning strategy, not needing to go to learning strategies for the full period, five days a week, are they getting a grade in whatever class they're going to? So you're talking about some need 83 minutes every day, but who, what do they do if they don't need that?
They would go to largely a general ed course. They'd have the opportunity. So again, the major concern with learning strategies every day for your entire high school career is that you're missing an opportunity to participate in another class. So for example, we've done a couple of things. We've been able to, at the edges, create some specific situations where students are receiving smaller pieces out of another class, limiting their impact.
So if a student is taking, going to strategies twice a week and chorus three times a week, they get a pass and a .5 credit for learning strategies and a .5 credit for chorus or something like that?
That was.
And a grade for chorus and a pass for learning strategies.
And so chorus is graded?
Chorus is graded.
If they go to chorus? Okay.
They, students also in lieu of learning strategies may take a learning lab, which is more of a drop-in space where if they are in an English class and they are in moment, in time, needing support with writing, they can be, they can ask to go and see a support teacher to get some one-on-one support with writing and that's a learning lab. That's just another opportunity that students have who don't want to take 83 minutes of strategies every day.
I'll just end by saying, I'm concerned for a student who gets a .5 credit in chorus and gets a grade in chorus and does, and gets, doesn't get a grade in learning strategies compared to the student who really needs to be in learning strategies full-time and therefore gets 25% of their entire high school experience potentially pass fail. That just doesn't, I can understand why people are concerned and I'll leave it.
There are standards for chorus, just so you know, there are.
I, I would challenge you all to think about standards for learning strategies if we're asking students to spend that much of their day. And I can understand if they're spending 83 minutes a week, that's a service indifferent. But if we're asking them to spend an entire 25% of their high school time in there.
And then just for me, one of the things, like some neighboring districts, in fact, utilize this as more of a structured academic support with a standalone curriculum. The concern that we have is arbitrary limiting students because not all the students that are sitting in the same learning strategies have the same need. So it, we are looking at, and teachers have been working really diligently to try and identify ways to respect that. Talking about habits of work and the rubrics that go into that, so we can respect the work they're doing and assess it appropriately. But the concern is not all students going into a period one, period two, period three or four, learning strategies are working on the same thing. So for two students, even two students that have math goals that are being supported, not all of them are receiving the same specific outcome, which is why it's IEP goal driven, which is the, for me, the main sort of confounding factor when we're talking about providing a grade. Because now we're talking about providing two students whose the desired outcome and the expectation of them each day is widely different. And then we're talking about how to grade them both appropriately in that way. There are a host of issues that come up, which is why I think further discussion is appropriate. But that would be my concern with, you know, with saying, hey, everybody who's in a learning strategy should be assessed the same way on some default set of standards, for example.
Member Fenn.
So maybe this is just a matter of, I think it's important difference. Is there a reason we can't call credit, no credit versus pass fail? Because when you say to me, a student fails a therapeutic service, I'd rather hear that they don't receive credit. Like to me, that's something, I don't know if there's a difference in the educational world between those two things, but to me, they're the same with the difference of how you feel receiving no credit versus fail. So, so you want, so pass, they do receive a credit. Fail would be no credit. But all students receive credit in the class if they pass. So you would prefer to say pass or no credit?
Well, no. I mean, I'm just saying, like in the university setting, credit, no credit versus pass fail, they're kind of interchangeable.
Okay.
So I'm saying, there seems to be like, there's a little bit of a psychological edge to telling, like, how this being pass fail to me. And if it, if it were all the same, I feel like having it be credit, no credit would be somehow more appropriate.
And the same for all the other classes that count as pass fail? Those would be credit, no credit too?
I didn't, I'm sorry. I don't remember how many others there were.
Just intern, work study, TA.
It's just when you said it would be, it's a therapeutic service and then to be given a grade of failing, that feels terrible to me. And I imagine that feels terrible to the student who's worked really hard or to the family. So if there were the opportunity to not say you failed, but to say you're not receiving credit, somehow that feels like more appropriate. But it was just a thought.
Thank you.
Member, you say?
Just riffing off of the university model, there's also the potential to think about allowing students or families maybe to choose between credit, no credit and a grade. And that might speak to getting at some of what you've just discussed. But I'll just, it's completely up to you, just a thought.
Dr. Peres?
I just want to offer a few thoughts on this. First, I would point out that creating a curriculum and giving a grade creates its own set of problems. I worked in a district where we had this course there. It was called Study Skills. And so there was a Study Skills curriculum. Students went through it. They usually took it freshman year because the idea was that it was to set them up with the skills they needed to have to be successful for the rest of their experience. So they got a grade and they got a credit. But then there, and one of the downsides of that is they weren't getting the kind of support that students are currently getting in this class. Instead of getting help in the other content classes, they were getting additional content. And then what happened was some students actually wanted to continue to have that course because they felt that they did get some help, like a lot of what they got was writing help. And then we were in the position, and the position of that high school was, okay, well, you've already passed it. So we can put you in the course and you can take it again, but now we can't give you another grade because you've already passed it. And we can't give you any credit because you've already passed it. So that's a, that's a situation they had. So that creates its own problem. I'm just saying that, that, every solution creates other problems. The other thing that I'd say is, I just want to encourage to continue to explore the options. The other thing that I'd say is, I just want to encourage to continue to explore the options, because I think that really is your answer.
Yes.
Right? Creating the learning labs, I think, was a great way of expanding services. It addressed the need of not locking up 25% of somebody's schedule with services that might be over-servicing them and taking them out of learning opportunities in other classes. The flex block will create more opportunities to do that. And the last thing I want to say is, this really comes down to choice, right? So we talk about locking up kids' schedules, and that actually does happen, but that's only with consent, right? I don't think, correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think we've ever gone to the BSEA to ask a hearing officer to force a child to take the class. If the child's parents and the teachers feel that it's not in their best interest, then we wouldn't do that. So, but the more choices you have, the more things people have to pick from, the less sort of Sophie's choices they'll face.
Thank you.
Other, other comments about this? Thank you.
Okay.
So that completes the program of studies. We are required to take a vote on that as a school committee, so I would entertain a motion.
To approve the Northampton High School program of studies as presented.
Second? Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. Thank you, thank you, Principal Valancourt. And next, we will move on to a report from Dr. Chevers on the NPS curriculum.
Can I turn-
So first, I just want you to know that I'm happy to come back and teach dance after I retire. It sounds like a lovely thing to do, I would really enjoy it.
But you're not-
But no, never. So, good evening, everyone. Tonight, I want to begin with gratitude. Earlier this evening, we had our Academy Awards for teacher, Curriculum Teacher Leaders. We had a red carpet with several curriculum teacher leaders, many of whom are in the room tonight, and I would like all the curriculum teacher leaders to please stand up and be recognized. We lost a few, it's getting late. But these wonderful people have spent hours and hours writing curriculum for the Northampton Public Schools, and I couldn't be more proud to stand next to them, to collaborate with them, and it's just been a wonderful, joyous, joyous, and hard work. It's been a long, long journey, and we are at a resting place, but not a stopping place.
Do you mind telling us their names and what areas they work on, just because I don't know a lot of people?
So, for your convenience, I have given you a handout.
Okay.
If you look on the handout, and I was just about to say a couple of things about the handout, the names of all of our curriculum teacher leaders are listed there and their number of years of service. And we have several people with us tonight who have been here for four and five years. So these are very, very dedicated workers in our district. Collectively, they have written 173 courses with more than 600 units. Some of these dedicated and talented teachers have worked as long as four and five years. It's pretty amazing. Some of these specially trained teachers also qualify for the Lifetime Achievement Award, and those will be forthcoming. Over the past five or six years, we have had many challenges, not the least of which are the constant updates, as you have heard earlier tonight, about the Massachusetts Curriculum Framework Standards. Specifically, we've had updates and brand-new standards for math, English, language, arts, history, social studies, technology, science, and most recently, the arts. Not to mention, as we've discussed somewhat tonight, the changing subject area requirements, most specifically for history. And we've had to rewrite those courses a couple of times. Our most recent course, which I will share a little bit about with you this evening, is our civics course, our eighth-grade civics course, which is coming along very nicely. Our successes also include winning several grants that have paid for our summer curriculum camps. Most recently, just last week, we got another $30,000 grant to fund our civic engagement curriculum camp we run the last week of June this year, which is pretty exciting. We have also been recognized by the state twice for our curriculum writing training, our structure, and our teacher expertise. We have presented twice at the state title conferences with regard to our curriculum writing process, and we were featured in the Massachusetts Department of Education's Curricular Newsletter. And we have shared our transfer goal expertise at the ASCD conference, that was a couple of years ago. Our teachers, these teachers have worked during the summers, after school, on snow days. We had plans to come in today and work for the entire day, if in fact, there was a snow day. People were going to walk in their boots. Seriously. During release time and even during vacations, February vacation, April vacation, and obviously over the summer. Curriculum work means working outside of the school day, even outside of the school year. In many districts, curriculum is directed from the top down, and teachers have little say over its structure, materials, or the themes that align it within subject areas or across subjects and grades. This is not the case in Northampton, where our talented and passionate teacher body work collaboratively to create courses and units specifically to the needs of our students. So my agenda for the next half hour, forty minutes or so, is as follows. First of all, we're going to talk a little bit about what curriculum is, how does a curriculum contribute to the success of a school district, what is our curriculum writing process, how is our curriculum stored, and what is included, and what are our next steps? And I'll take you through a few of the sample units, so you can see what they look like and where they're found on our district website. So curriculum, I think about curriculum like a blueprint. If you're going to build a house, you have a blueprint. If you're going to build knowledge and understanding in a child, you need a blueprint. It's a blueprint for learning that is derived from desired results. Content and performance standards. Curriculum takes content and shapes it into a plan for how to conduct effective and engaging teaching and learning. It's more than a list of topics, it's a map for how to create the desired student performances. How does a curriculum contribute to the success of a school district? It provides a content-based resource for deep critical outcome analysis. It provides an essential component to an equitable education. It provides a resource for ELL, Special Education, and all educators to support our diverse learners and their peers. It provides opportunities to link professional development, curriculum, and district improvement, and it provides all stakeholders with an opportunity to learn about our district curricula. So, the first thing, provides a content-based resource for deep critical outcome analysis. Here are some examples, these are some of the things that we can think about now that we have a curriculum. What opportunities does the curriculum provide for civic engagement across subject areas? We're going to take up that this summer, and I can't wait. What content and skills are we teaching and when, and are they consistent with our district values and goals? To what extent are our summative assessments asking students to think critically? And how are we measuring that outcome? What technology standards are taught in a grade span, let's just say, grade six through eight? And do they prepare students for ninth grade? Issues of alignment. To what extent are students writing across the curriculum, and what are the expected outcomes? What are students learning about the idea of relationship consent, K through 12, in our wellness and our health curricula? And what are the opportunities for social-emotional learning within units? Next, a curriculum provides an essential component to an equitable education. It guarantees a high-quality, common-outcome-based plan for each subject area and grade level. It assesses all students with the same measurement tool and descriptors, expectations, with adjustments as needed, of course, and provides a foundation on which to differentiate instruction. It maintains alignment within and between subject areas and provides an organized, systematic resource to critically examine materials and texts, instructional strategies for bias and perspective-taking. Next, a curriculum provides a resource for EL, Special Education, and all educators to support our diverse learners and their peers. It provides a consistent unit-based resource to meet the needs of student educational plans. Provides a comprehensive list of vocabulary to pre-teach before adults encounter the unit in class, because everybody has access to all the units. Provides a resource in order to pre-teach and prepare culturally and linguistically diverse students and their peers in order to begin a unit with a topic outside of their schema. Next, it provides opportunities to link professional development, curriculum, and district improvement, sustaining a successful process of continuous improvement and strategic planning. We are not too far away from our district improvement process, and now we're going to have this amazing tool to move the district forward with that plan. We will create meaningful and effective professional development, support teachers and new teaching assignments to be successful. We've had quite a few new teachers come to our district, and they're so happy and excited to have a curriculum that they can see. Collaboratively support our district values and goals with all stakeholders, caregivers, teachers, administrators, and students. I attended a webinar today on sharing curriculum with students. So this one is really small, I'm going to read it out loud. I didn't want to have 100 slides. So what is the Northampton Public School vision of curriculum? Students should receive the same common educational experience across grades and courses. Curriculum development, it never ends. It's ongoing, collaborative, and dynamic. Collaborative curriculum development provides a vehicle for critical conversations about teacher instructions. Just being in the room with our CTLs when they're writing units, those are some of the richest conversations that we can have in education, talking about which materials go where and the sequencing of instructional strategies. Tonight, people were looking at resources for young children for social-emotional learning. A comprehensive curriculum is aligned, rigorous, and engages all students. Engagement with stakeholders, all of you, caregivers, students, is enhanced through transparent communication of curriculum expectations. Curriculum work improves student learning, it's the backbone of instruction. Curriculum design and implementation is an essential component of educational practice. Curriculum needs to be aligned with the mass frameworks, the AP frameworks, as needed. And the process of writing, differentiating, reflecting on and revising curriculum is ongoing and collaborative. Curriculum should be rigorous, engaging, and developed using the Understanding by Design model. So what is that? What is Understanding by Design? We've been using this for a very long time. I think almost as long as I've been in the district, which is about 27 years. What is it? What is UBD? A curriculum framework that goes deeper than the content knowledge with critical understanding. It's all about deep understandings. It includes, this is my favorite part, empathy and perspective-taking as key facets of learning in addition to the traditional components of Bloom's taxonomy. We all remember that, right? To know, comprehend, evaluate, synthesize, analyze, apply. But UBD is also about students learning to empathize and learning about perspective-taking. It's sometimes called backwards design, because you start with what you want students to know, do, and understand. You start with the outcomes. That's the first thing you do. And then activity planning comes after the desired results are identified. And then at its core, we ask ourselves, what do we want students to be able to do when they graduate from high school? That is all based on transfer of learning. And maybe some of you remember the transfer goal workshop that we had last year, we had a big presentation, I think it was last year or the year before. So what is our process for creating curriculum? This is just the basics. First of all, we, of course, identify courses and organize units to be written based on the Massachusetts Framework Standards, district requirements and course requirements or alignment. CTLs, teacher teams, department chairs, share in the unit-writing organization and work collaboratively with colleagues to map out a process for unit writing. Sometimes this is divided up, you might have a CTL running a teacher team and everybody takes a unit. We've done it in a lot of different ways. CTL teams and chairs, they write, they share, they receive feedback, they revise, they receive feedback several times, they refine. And then a unit undergoes a pilot project, a pilot period, and then revisions and updates are made. And then finally, the unit becomes an official part of the course. And again, with updates as needed or required. Three key design questions. What is worthy of understanding? You can't teach 2,500 standards. You have to teach, you have to choose priority standards. What are the priority standards? What is worthy of understanding? And then, what is your evidence for that understanding? How are students going to show that they really understand this? And then, what are the learning experiences that are going to promote that understanding? That's what the curriculum process is about. So we have curriculum maps. What's a curriculum map? It's a tool for organizing expectations for what students should know, be able to do in each subject each year. It shows what our students are learning, but it's important to remember these are outlines. Teachers are teaching real students in front of them every day and differentiating and teaching them the way they need to be taught and teaching them the content they need on that particular day. So, these are outlines, they don't capture all of the richness that happens in the classroom, but nonetheless, these are our guides for learning and teaching. Each curriculum map includes what students are learning in the individual units for that course. So, what are the parts of our unit plans? Basically, three stages. Stage one, desired results. What do we want students to know, do, and understand? Stage two, what evidence? How are we going to assess what they have learned, and what is the assessment evidence? And stage number three is the learning plan. And that's where I kind of call it the magic bag, because that's the part where the teachers get to apply their magic. It's an organized plan, but it's, that's the moment at which teachers can differentiate the learning for the students that they're teaching. for the students that they're teaching. So what's included in our plan?
Dr. Cheever?
Yes.
What was the, when I was looking over the startup, what was the public part there?
Oh, thank you for that. Sorry about that. That's the part that's public. That's the part that everyone will be able to see, everyone can see. That is the public part of our unit plans. Obviously, we're not going to share the assessments with, you know, students in the public. And the learning plan, that's the teacher plan. So that's not something that we would share publicly. But the desired results, and I'll show you what that looks like momentarily. So what is included in each unit plan for stage one, the desired results? And this is, again, this is the public part. This is what you would be able to see. First of all, the unit overview. And that's an overview that includes the title of the unit, the grades, the time allowance which is suggested. Again, these are students in front of us, and you might need a little more time or a little less time. The focus of the unit, the topics, a brief discussion of the big ideas, the key instructional methods, major student requirements, a brief description of what students will actually do, and if there's any prerequisite knowledge that students need to have before taking on that particular unit. Transfer goals. I referred to these earlier, and this is indeed the workshop that we did last year. Transfer goals are those goals developed with college and career in mind. They're what we want students to be able to do independently when they confront new challenges, both in and outside of school, beyond the current lessons in the unit. Each unit includes one or more transfer goals. These transfer goals are explicitly taught or taught towards for our younger students in these units. And then, these transfer goals are unique to the Northampton Public Schools. Some of them are based on organizations, but the themes are very unique to our school and the teachers created and agreed upon the unit transfer goals. And we have transfer goals for every single subject. And the most recent is, I'm working with the guidance department. They're now doing theirs. So, district transfer goal themes. These are the themes that are in every single set of transfer goals. Communication, including the strategic use of technology. Critical thinking. Collaboration, social emotional learning. Creativity and flexible thinking. And civic engagement, including local and global citizenship. And that is the piece that we are going to be working on specifically this summer. Unit standards, you know what these are. They come from the Massachusetts Frameworks, most of the time. Some of them come from AP Frameworks. But we have chosen the standards that are priority. These would be the standards that are taught and assessed, not reviewed. We review standards all of the time, not reviewed or reinforced. You're going to see the standards that are actually taught and assessed. That's one of the criteria for choosing them. And they would be assessed on a summit of assessment for that unit. A summit of assessment is the final project or exam or experience, you know, young children, obviously, experience, that allows students to demonstrate the extent to which they learned the standards. They're able to do, understand, and know whatever they were supposed to in this particular unit. And then, the summit of assessments are aligned to the standards and assessed with a rubric. Now, the summit of assessments are not public. I said that, you know, this is not, we wouldn't want to put our exams online, you know, for public sharing, for obvious reasons. But, your students, students will be bringing home these summit of assessments all of the time, or most of the time, and you'll be able to see them, and you will be able to see the rubrics as well. The rubrics are the measurement tool. Now, again, with younger children, there's going to be checklists, it's going to be a little different with younger children. But in the upper grades, and obviously in the middle school and high school, you're going to see a rubric. And a rubric is a teacher and student measurement tool used to determine the proficiency level for the unit standards. And it usually contains descriptors that provide specific and direct feedback to students and measures the growth. And this is a tool for students, and it's a tool for teachers. Teachers can use it for feedback, students can use it to learn. Understandings are the big ideas that have enduring values in students' lives beyond the unit, course, and classroom. Essential questions, one of my favorite things. These are the questions that you are likely to see on a blackboard. They're the big questions that students are uncovering as they work through a unit. And I have examples of these. I'll share some with you in a few minutes. Content, obviously, the key knowledge for each of the units. Think of it almost as the facts, the details. And then, of course, the skills. What are the abilities students will acquire as a result of the units? What will the student actually do? And then, finally, tiered vocabulary. Tiered vocabulary is the vocabulary essential for the mastery of the unit, and we have tiered ours. It's not all tiered yet. We're kind of working on this. But our goal is to have tiered vocabulary. So if I'm an EL teacher, ELE teacher, I could go in, I can look at these words, and they're all nicely categorized for me. And I put the definitions right in that model, but just to give you an example, tier three would be particular to a particular subject, like the word proton, electron. Tier two would be interdisciplinary words like synthesize, analyze, critique. And tier one would be a word like list, a word that might be in our everyday category, but not all of our learners would know. So those are the major components of our curriculum, our public curriculum. And so now, I'm going to move over here so I can manipulate the computer, and I'm going to take you into the sense. As you are all familiar, hopefully, with our Northampton Public School website. And I also want to thank Molly McLaughlin for working with me on the technical aspects of this. We worked on this part together. So, under About, we see NPS Curriculum. And you'll also see here, here's our handy-dandy list of K-12, thank you, K-12 transfer goals. You can click on that. And here are the transfer goals that are explicitly taught or taught towards for every single subject. So here's math, if you would like to see the transfer goals. Now, these are K-12 transfer goals. Every single teacher in the entire district is teaching towards these transfer goals. And here they are. Transfer goal number one, solve problems. Kindergartners can solve a sharing problem. Older children can have, they can solve complex calculus problems, and so on and so forth. You can go through each one of these and take a lovely tour, and I highly encourage you to do that. And you'll see all those themes that we talked about earlier. So let's go here, though. It says NPS District Curriculum. This is the opening page, and it tells a little bit about our curriculum. And then, it gives some instructions. I think so many times, we don't know where to go when we have a question. Where do we go? Well, we have a lot of experts, and the most important expert, of course, are the children or students' teachers. So, should you have questions, the first person to speak with, of course, is the child or the student's teacher. And then, secondly, we have grade level and subject area department chairs. And here they are. Math and science chairs, K through five. ELA and social studies chairs, K through five. And then, we have some additional chairs, phys ed, visual, technology, LL, performing. And then, if you have questions about six to eight curriculum, here are your directions and your chairs. High school department chairs, I'm going to tell you, if you go through those lists, you're going to see a lot of the same people that are on the CTL list. These are very, very devoted teachers. And then, if you have general questions about instruction in a school, you have all the principals' emails. And then, before that, you can also refer to our math coach, Jim Hanson, or our literacy coach, Andrew Samuelson, who's with us tonight. And then, finally, if there are questions about alignment, implementation, or the process of writing curriculum, of course, that would be me. So, all of the protocol for asking questions is here, so we hope that will help people. All right. So now, to access these naps, you will need to visit our Atlas page here. So then, it is a simple click, and look what appears. This is very exciting if you've been working on it for five years. So, this is our Northampton Public School curriculum website. Ta-da! And so, we have all of the, so, all of the elements of our curriculum are listed here. Everything from the course title, the unit titles, the transfer goals, all of those things that I just reviewed for you are here as well, in case people want to read more about them and understand them. And then, our vision of curriculum is here. And then, navigating the system. Molly and I spent a lot of time honing these instructions, and we've tried them several times, and they seem to work pretty well. So these are the instructions for how to use it, and I am going to model that right now. So this is our beautiful Northampton N. And to the right of that, we have the little symbol for Atlas. And underneath that, it says Unit Calendars, and you're going to click, and here you go. Here are over 173 courses and well over 600 units that have been written. So, I'm going to give you a tour of something that we don't often look at. We're going to look at some art at the high school. I'm going to take you in. So I'm using this filter feature to the left. I'm choosing a school type, and you can see that there's a few choices over here. Well, we're going to go to the high school. And you don't have to choose high school, because we only have one. And then, grade level, I'm not going to choose a grade level. Subject, I'm going to choose art and music. And now, I'm going to browse. You can get more specific if you like, but now, I'm just going to browse. So here are all of our arts courses. And at the high school, we have art, music, and dramatics are all in one area. So I am going to choose, let's see, I'm going to choose Ceramics 1. Notice that you have the grade level, the title of the course. This little thing right here means that it was written by consensus, more than one person, a teacher team. These are the names of the two curriculum directors, and these are the two teachers that teach the course. Really, really handy information. Ceramics. Let's take a tour. So here are, here's the first page you're going to see, and this is the whole unit calendar. And these are all the units in this particular Ceramics 1 course. This is, apparently, this course is taught in the, starting in the winter semester, the second semester. And these are the approximate number of weeks that each of the units is taught. So let's take a look at this first one. In order to actually look inside of the unit, you just press the unit, and here it is. Process and properties of clay is an introductory course. And here are all of the parts for the first stage. All right. So there's the unit overview. During the one-week processes and properties of clay unit for nine through 12 in the ceramics class, students are introduced to the operation of the clay studio and studio safety through demonstrations, class exercises, working with clay and tools, slide shows, et cetera. I'm not going to read this whole thing. You can go in afterwards and read it. But let me show you some, another tool that you have at your disposal here. You can mouse over, I love this, you can mouse over unit overview if you want to see, oh, what's in a description? Well, here's what a description is, right there. So it's another way to understand what is inside or what might be inside that section. And then, here are the transfer goals for this particular unit. Problem solve and take risks. Respond and empathize. I love this one, it's one of my favorites. Describe, analyze, interpret, critically evaluate, and respectfully respond to art created by self and other artists with global understanding. So you're going to be looking at art and ceramics in this particular unit from a variety of cultures. Curriculum frameworks and standards. Now, this, as you can see, this is the next thing we have to do. We have brand-new standards, so they're going to have to update this with the brand-new standards. That'll be a piece of work that might get done this summer. They're not actually too far off. There's some added. Actually, one of the elements of the new standards for the arts is there's a lot of diversity in the new standards, which I really like. And then, we have the understandings. These are the big ideas. And remember, this is an introductory unit. Creating artwork is a process of pre-planning, designing, creating, and editing. There's a difference between utilitarian, functional, and fine art. Process is as important as the product. And then, the essential question, this is my favorite one. What is the difference between art and craft? Now, if you're the art teacher in this course, you're going to write that on your board. And every lesson that you're teaching in this unit, you're going to have continued conversations about that question, and you're going to uncover more and more detail as you move along. What a great way to teach. Sometimes, students keep journals to record their thinking and learning. What is students, what are students going to, what will they know, do? And then, here's your tiered vocabulary. Let's see, characteristics of physical aspects and stages and abilities of clay. Ceramics is the first synthetic material created by humankind, et cetera. And then, all of the skills, and notice the skills begin with verbs. Explain the process of properties of clay. Discuss the broad distinction between fine arts and crafts. Identify health risks. Identify, respectfully describe, oh, look at this one. Respectfully describe and respond to art created by diverse cultures with a specific focus on symbols. All right. So here is, here's stage one, and this is what everybody can see. So that is the first example. I also want to show you one more very wonderful feature of this. It works with Google Translator. So here's Google Translator in the upper right-hand corner. And of course, we would help our families upload this, who might need it. It's not hard to do. I did it today. It's really quick and easy. And you simply click on Translate this page, and then, translate to, let's see, I think I'll translate it to Spanish, and there it is. All right. Now, isn't that great? Yeah. And look at all the languages. It's really, it's quite marvelous. So, that works very nicely. So now, I'm going to take you through two more units, real quick. But before I take you to the next unit, or as, at the same time, let's see if I can do two things at once, I want to tell you about a two things at once, I want to tell you about a letter that I got from a young woman from the middle school. I'm not going to use her last name, but her first name is Abigail. And she wrote to me, and she was concerned. She said that in Northampton Public Schools, Black history should be more acknowledged and, and learned about, because students of color need to learn more about their history. And she specifically mentions Black activists in her letter. And I was really happy to receive this letter, because this is the kind of thing that we can use our curriculum to look into. So, I immediately, this is a middle school student, so I immediately wanted to see what we were doing in the middle school, and seeing that we have a course that is in the works, this is a draft, but I'm going to show it to you, let's see. Social Studies, and I'm going to hit Browse. So, this is a brand-new course, and this course has been written by Faith Bisbee, Tracy Dawson-Green, and Kate Fontaine is also from the high school, has worked together. That's the beauty of the summer. The summer brings everybody together, so there's a lot of collaboration, K through 12. So, this is our civics course, and I was actually able to answer her question by looking at the curriculum. There are so many reports that you can run with Atlas. You can run a report on any standard, you can run a report on specific words or concepts in order to get information. So, this is really useful, this was really useful for me. So, I went to How Change Is Made, and I looked at the desired, the first stage, the desired results, and I read the unit overview, and I was really pleased to read it. I'm just going to read this one sentence, it says, "The role of political protest and the courage of individuals in fighting for change, equal rights and protection for all will guide them through the study of abolition, segregation, reconstruction, modern civil rights movement into Black power, Black Lives Matter, women's suffrage, Native American rights, and the LGBTQ+ movements. Students will see how persistence, bravery, and dedication can lead to change. Students will become, research and become an expert on a specific part of one of these topics as a final eighth-grade project." That's the summative assessment. And then, here are the transfer goals. One of my favorites, number six, engage as a global citizen. Use a variety of digital tools and communication skills, apply knowledge of political, economic, and social systems to solve complex problems, and take informed action as a global citizen." Kind of timely. Critical, and then here are the framework standards, the understandings, the essential questions, what students should know, be able to do. Let's see. Critically evaluate online resources and websites for reliability and potential bias in preparing for a presentation. Keep a reflective journal in response to political cartoons, discussions in class, et cetera. You can go back and read these on your own, I highly recommend that you do take a look at this one, it's, it's really good. And it's, it's just a starter as well. All right, I'm going to show you one more, and this one is super exciting. We're going to look at elementary math. We're going to look at Grade 1. And let's see, Math 1, here we go. Again, four curriculum, curriculum developers and 14 teachers. It's a lot of people to collaborate, and they've done it. Kindergarten, all of the grades, they've collaborated greatly. Okay, so here are all the units in our first grade math course. I want to show you Unit 3. Unit 3 is called How Much, or excuse me, How Many of Each, How Many in All. So, we have, again, the unit overview, the transfer goals, the standards, understandings, it's all here. But there's something very special about this unit. So, we've had our math units for quite some time, but now, because we've had them, we're able to go in and make them more specific to the needs of our students and our district. So, many of you have heard about our Math Recovery Program in our elementary schools, and actually, it's not really a program, that was a mistake, I should say, it's an approach to learning, it's professional development. So, what we've started to do this past year, and we have a grant with this, with Math Recovery, and Beth Brady is, is doing a lot of this work with Jim Hansen, and frankly, all of the other teachers. They're embedding math recovery practices into our curriculum. So, this is where you really want to be in curriculum. A program is a program, but a curriculum is yours when you are able to embed and, and make it your own. Embed those things that you know are going to move your children forward. And this is, in fact, where we are with our elementary math curriculum, it's pretty exciting. So, I'm going to show you this little note here, and we're sharing this with the public, but this is really for teachers, I mean, that's really the purpose of it. But, note, before starting Unit 3, complete the AVMR, that's Math Recovery, Addition and Subtraction Assessment as a pre-assessment. For students who are at Construct 3, and teachers know what that is. Able to count on, for addition and subtract, and count back for subtraction, administer and score the full structuring AVMR assessment schedule in order to properly differentiate. So, it's a note to the teacher, so that she or he knows that this is a pre-assessment that should be done, that will help the teacher to differentiate as they move forward. And if I took the time to go into the lesson, you would see inside the lessons that they're reorganized, we've taken math investigations, and we've reorganized them in some units, in some places, and we've embedded these math recovery practices. And this is really, it's important work, it's groundbreaking work, there are no other districts that are actually taking the time to do this kind of work, we're actually breaking ground with this. And we can do so because, again, we have these amazing math recovery teacher leaders, and department chairs, and coaches, and groups of educators that are willing and able and excited and passionate to do this work. So, that is, that's pretty exciting work. I'm going to go back to my stand and finish up now. Bring you back to this. So, we have a curriculum. What are our next steps? Sharing Atlas with caregivers and students. We're going to be doing, I'm going to be doing some workshops likely at the end of March and the beginning of April. Be sitting down with school councils and parents and sharing this information. I am very excited about creating the Northampton Public Schools Curriculum Review Calendar, and we're going to do that in conjunction with the District Improvement Plan, that Dr. Provost is going to head up. Really excited about that. Think of all the possibilities of, now, we have all this data, we can really look at instruction in a very deep way. And then, we'll, of course, have a Fall Sharing Plan. A few comments before, you can turn the lights on if you want. A few comments just before I, I end up. So, the curriculum we have written, I think you have to move, there we go. The curriculum we have written is not a finished product, rather, it's a beginning. It's the starting point for reflection and opportunities for growth that could be of immeasurable value to our district, to the future of literally thousands of kids moving forward. For those of you who haven't been around as long as I have, we have seen, and many of us in this room, we have seen paper versions of curriculum, and some of you work in schools, you know what happens, right? Curriculum gathers dust on shelves, it gets packed in deepened filing cabinets, it gets tossed away in, in folders, and neatly organized on charts and, charts and stuffed in the bottom of drawers. The truth is, once a curriculum has been articulated, it should be in a very accessible place. It should become the catalyst for all of the district's continued work. Of course, this is your friendly curriculum director saying this, we think everything is curriculum, but it is really important. Every professional that has come into our district has said the same thing. Christina Dubé, Carol Tomlinson, Marcia Embo, Mike Anderson, remember Bill Henderson and the, about inclusion? Our theorist, Jay McTye and Wiggins, Kathy Vatterow, Tim Westerberg, these are all people whose works we use to inform our curriculum, and people who have delivered professional development to our, to our district. Their first question when they come into the district is, where's your curriculum? What do you have for curriculum? How are things aligned? And now, we have answers, which is great. And then, most, a couple of years ago, Barbara Love, she was interested in how equitable our curriculum was, was there access, equitable access? So, finally, technology offers the gift of sharing this important work online in multiple languages with caregivers, students, teachers, administrators, our community, and beyond. And I'm hoping our shared value of curriculum, our commitment to an equitable education for our children, and our profound respect for the work and collaborative spirit of purpose will carry us forward if we hold curriculum in a prominent place in our district. And there it is. Many of them left. They have to teach lessons tomorrow. So, I realize that was very long, I don't even know how long I went, but it was, but I couldn't, I couldn't be any shorter, I think, that, you know, five years of work. I'm happy to address any questions. And also, I am happy to have conversations with anybody who might want to sit down and tour the site with me, I'd be delighted to do that. I know that was a quick tour, but I'd be happy to do that.
Applause for you and the teachers and the teams who put this all together. It's incredible, the level of detail there. Having done a lot of this work myself, I know how involved it is, and connecting back to the, sitting on a shelf, I know how it can just sit there. You do mention a Curriculum Review Calendar. Considering it took five years to put this together, have you started thinking about a regular process to make sure not to lose that work and have it become stale and not a living document?
Critical, and, and the fact that we have the technology to do so makes it super easy. And not only do we have the technology, but we also have the structure. We have department chairs at our elementary schools. We have a math department chair and an elementary, ELA department chair for every single grade level. And we meet every month. We meet as chairs, and they meet with their teams. What an incredible opportunity to move and continue to move that, that work forward. We also have our coaches that can help us with that work as well. So, I see it as having excellent planning, having the structure within the district to move that, that process forward, and then also, having the technology and, you know, the tool to make the work easy.
Member Vysansky.
So, well, first, you know, kudos, congratulations to all of you, and your excitement's contagious. And I know if we let you, you could just talk for a few more hours about this. This was like tip of the iceberg for you, and I, and I, and I love that, and that comes across really well. So, two things, one, I'm really interested in how parents can access this. I feel like, especially in the elementary and middle school, that's just been such a missing part, and I, and I think it's great, the Google Translate and on computer, and I just wonder if it's going to be wrapped in at all to our school open houses, so that when parents are there in person, they can get a piece of paper. I know that's very old-fashioned, but sometimes, that's just another way to hit parents with this kind of information.
So, what we've-
Or whatever else you're thinking, I don't know, it's just, you know.
I have been thinking a lot about that, and what we have started at our high school is, our high school teachers are including some of that information in their course syllabi. So, some of that is actually, you know, on a, on a piece of paper for, for parents, and, and then, of course, we can give them the website and more information, you know, at those experiences. We're going to have a Fall Sharing Plan, that'll be very detailed, we'll have-
It's great.
-school newsletters and a variety of other places, and, you know, I suppose we certainly could, you know, give paper copies as needed.
I, I mean, again, I think it's much more, I've seen it much more at the high school level than in the elementary and middle school, and coming from another school district with my oldest kid, I was surprised that we weren't getting that information when they were in elementary and middle school, so that'd be great to see it more. My second question, I just, sort of, another practical example, you know, Student Union came to us last year about sex ed in the wellness classroom, and how it's being, you know, their concerns about it, and I remember the whole conversation about how hard it was, because to get them access to the curriculum, so this would solve that problem, is that correct?
Yes, it does.
Very exciting.
Yes, it does, yes, and that curriculum was updated as well.
Right.
But yeah, it definitely solves that problem, for sure.
Terrific. Thanks.
I have a minor thing. First, thank you to everybody, most of you aren't here, but those of you who are, thank you in person, and to you, Dr. Tivers, I mean, this, the number of hours that went through this is a lot, obviously, and it's really exciting for reasons everyone's already said. This is a minor thing, but on your slide under Unit Transfer Goals, and I'm not sure which one it is, I see this wording a lot, it says, throughout a lot of the material we get, a school committee, and this particular wording is transfer goals. Are those goals developed with college and career in mind? And there's something else there that I wonder if you would consider adding, and that is like, I don't know the right word, but citizenry, it's all over there. How do we be kind to each other, and how do we, you know, bring an anti-racist perspective to our work? And I think adding college, you know, these goals developed with college, comma, career, and whatever word we can come up with, and I'm sitting here thinking citizenry, but there's maybe a better word, but I think that belongs there, because that's equally important for our-
Well, the citizenship and, and that piece, they're actually in the transfer goals-
They are. Yeah, but highlight, so it isn't just this slide, it's just, we've seen things like, we have to do this to get our students ready for college and career, and I feel like collectively, we should also add this other piece to that. It, it just seems equally important. Thank you.
I just want to start by echoing the, the kudos from my colleagues. This is a lot of work, and it's such a huge, it really just takes the district so much further forward in terms of what we're able to do as a result of all of that work. And also, it's ongoing work, right? This idea of keeping it a living, breathing document, so thank you in advance for all the work that's still coming. I'm thinking about the, the District Review Report and some of the areas of opportunity that we have, and I'm, and it seems like there's a real direct link between the ability to use the maps and, and to engage folks in conversations about some of the work ahead. A couple of the things I'm thinking about are allowing for formative and common assessments at the high school, and the other is really thinking about how we're demonstrating learning experiences that develop higher-order thinking skills. I was wondering if you could talk to how the maps allow you to engage various teachers in these different areas?
I actually, I was going to thank you over here for just a minute.
Hope it still works.
I thought you were trying to address that question with a show and tell.
Because I think that's the best way to do it. So, the high school, actually, the entire district, we've been on, we've been looking at, let's see, I have to take you in a different view, so this is my view, and you might actually find this kind of interesting. So, let's see, so this is Manage Courses, let's take a look, so this is my view, because I'm a super admin, right? So this is my view, because I'm a super admin, right? Which is what they call it. I'm going to take you back into arts and music. And I'm going to take you to, let's see. Let's go back in that one course, and I want to show you, I hadn't, I hope it's a good example of this. Let's see. Well, so this is my view. It's a little bit different. And actually, this is the teacher's view. It's a little different. Let's go into process and properties of clay. And here are stage one, desired results. Here's the transfer goals. Here are the curriculum frameworks, understandings, tiered vocabulary. Here's the assessment evidence. And I want you to notice, this is actually perfect. I want you to notice that, that the first assessment, it's kind of small, but the first assessment there is a pre-assessment. So all of the units, or most of the units, have a pre-assessment. What do students know before they, about clay and about art and about craft, before they even begin this unit? What do they know? That's where you need to begin with student learning. And then, the formative assessment is an assessment that you would give, you know, halfway through or some point. And usually, there's more, especially with other courses, you know, there's multiple formative assessments throughout a unit. And that's where you get feedback from the students, so you know what your next instructional moves are. And then, for every unit, there is a summative assessment. And that summative assessment is directly aligned above with the standards that the teacher has chosen, or the group of teachers have chosen. This is what this teacher is evaluating in the summative assessment. So we've had a very, very, we had professional development last fall about organizing assessments and making sure that those summative assessments are common, that they're commonly, they're used within all, within a course and within that unit. Does that help?
Yeah. So will that be the case as well in maybe a course like math?
Absolutely.
Or somewhere where there's multiple teachers and-
Yes.
-there'll be a way to then take the data that comes out of those courses to then be able to compare?
Well, you could, you couldn't compare grades, but you could definitely, well, I mean, this doesn't record grades, but you can see what the expectations are for that course. And for that particular course, you would see the same summative assessment. So you can assume that for that particular course, that the teachers are using that particular summative assessment to measure.
And it's common across the courses?
It is common, yes.
Okay. Yep. And then, and then also about the, just the higher order thinking skills, is, are you able to see, I believe Atlas allows you to do that, but I didn't quite see it in the examples, sort of the different, the different levels on which teachers are looking for?
So, that is a really good question. And let's go back to this example. I love this question, because this is my favorite thing about understanding by design. Now, I'm not going to tell you that all of the units have all these pieces in them, but many of them do. And actually, I'm looking at the wrong one. I was looking for one that had, let's see. Oh, this one doesn't have it. But the answer, the short and the long of it is yes. And I'll show you our tool. These are our tools right here. Some of the teachers have the six facets of understanding marked in their, in their learning plans. Some of them do. Not all, we're working on that. And some of the, so in the elementary schools, those are kind of worked into, those facets of understanding are worked into the, you know, the programs they're using. So it's not as critical, but definitely for most of them, especially with high school. That's a piece of work that many of the teachers have done. But here they are, the six facets of understanding right here. Explanation, interpretation, application, perspective, empathy, and self-knowledge. UBD requires that these facets of understanding are included in the, in the teaching guidelines, or most of them. Okay? Most of the facets of understanding. So we have done workshops on this, and we probably need to do more workshops. I mean, you always need to go back and think more. But we have Bloom's Wheel, we have the depth of knowledge chart. The high school likes this. The high school uses a depth of knowledge chart quite a bit. Oh, now it's not going to come up. There it is. And this is really nice. It shows, it gives you some verbs and some terms to use in order to get to deeper levels of knowledge. So this is something that we have addressed at high school, and it is something that's part of our curriculum training and part of our work. Yeah. Thanks for the question. That was a great one.
Yes, certainly. Huge congrats to all of you. Wearing a couple of different hats, like on the teacher's side, I was clicking around while you're doing it, and it was just a great feeling as a teacher to be able to click where, show the teachers' names and literally, next to that unit, being able to email those teachers and be able to ask them a question, hey, what's going on in this unit? Because they need to tag to it. I think that's an awesome level of collaboration there. So, super excited as a parent. It's really great. And I know schools are doing a lot to communicate and to have that resource there for parents and teachers to draw on is awesome. I'm wondering on the, on a school committee hat, two questions. One, like, how wedded to the program, whether it's investigations, or foundations, or math recovery, or whatever, how wedded to those programs is, are these maps? Like, if you change to a different program, what impact does it have on those maps, is one question. Because it seems like there was a lot of years to building up to that, so I could imagine if a program shifts, how is it to be able to adjust to that?
I would say it has a pretty profound effect on elementary schools, for sure. Middle school, probably a little less so, and not so, not at all at the high school. But yeah, it would have a profound effect. But I would also suggest that, you know, here's another piece of work that we just did, and Andrew is right here tonight. Andrew's our literacy coach, and we have just taken, and actually, Andrew has taken up a lot of this work. He just took the writing standards and has, for our program, and revised them to meet the Massachusetts standards. Because we use the Lucy Cawkins Readers and Writers Workshop. And we just, you know, he just redid all of those and reorganized those. And now, we're making a lot of those assessments our own. And next year is likely going to be more about reading and fundamental skills of reading. And we're taking foundations, fundamental skills, and embedding it with the Lucy Cawkins program, which is actually really perfect. So if we all of a sudden decided not to do Lucy Cawkins, which is likely not going to happen, because we're really happy with it, teachers chose it, our students are doing well, it's, you know, we might teach it differently. We might modify our units. But certainly, you know, if we, if we abandoned the units altogether, you know, I guess that would require, you know, some revise, some revision.
And then the follow-up to that also is, on the programmatic side, it's all embedded in the Atlas program, which is something I'm assuming purchased and, like, how, I guess, what happens if, you know, they go, or they get bought up or out of business, or think, you know, like shifts happen with that technologically wise?
So we were very careful about this. It was a big concern of mine. And we did a lot of research at the beginning course, and when we chose Atlas, there weren't a lot of choices to be made. But Atlas Rubicon had been around for a really long time, and their organization was really tight. They have a worldwide, they have a global organization. And actually, they were just, they just combined with another larger company, and the company's doing really well. So, you know, all of those things are going well for Atlas Rubicon. And, but, so what do you do? What happens if, if for some reason, we decided to move to another platform? What you pay for is a migration. You pay, you know, technologists to, from the other company most often, to go into the software that you're using and do a migration. And that's one way of dealing with it. Another way is to simply download the units, which we could do if we had to do it, and then the company would take care of the migration through PDFs. So there are ways to do it. None of it is really great, but, you know, I can tell you this, Atlas Rubicon has given us terrific service. They've been wonderful. And in fact, they're giving us a free public access. I don't know if it'll be forever, but certainly for right now, they're giving us free public access. We're paying for the subscription, but they're giving us a free public access to help get us started. So that was really good.
Dr. Provost?
Thank you. You have recognized the teachers who've worked on this project with you, which is appropriate, but I think it's important for someone to recognize you. So I just want to tell a little story about this that brings together a lot of the comments that were just made. So I remember starting in this district, and it was a few years after the last district review, where the finding was, there is no curriculum in the district. And I knew that the document had been out for a couple of years. And so, one of my first meetings with the leadership team, I said, okay, so where have you gotten with the curriculum piece? And one of the principals reached into her bag and pulled out one of these three-ring binders and said, I think this is it. And the rest of the principals just looked and said, I've never seen that before. Can I get a copy of it? At which point, I realized there was no curriculum in the district. There really, there just wasn't. So, the reason why you couldn't get that communication when your child was in the lower grades is there was nothing. Nancy and her team built this from zero. So it's been an amazing achievement. And I'll say that we had a lot of Monday morning conversations that were a little bit uncomfortable, sort of maybe Lincoln McClellan-like, where I was like, okay, so where's the curriculum? I need to get something out there to the public. And she's like, well, I need to get team leaders first. And I'd be like, so, all right, now you got the team leaders. When can you get them out to the public? And like, well, now they have to be trained. And then I was like, okay, so 40% of this five-year period has gone by. I was kind of expecting there'd be 40% of something to show. And Nancy was just like, have faith, you're going to love it when it's done. Just believe me. And this has all really come together in the last couple of months. I've seen samples, but I haven't seen the finished product until just a few weeks before you all did. And it really was worth the wait. And it really was worth all of the faith that I had in you through the process. So I just want to thank you for your leadership through this. This is moving the district so far ahead, and you've done something here that's going to benefit kids and teachers for years to come. So thank you.
Hey. Thank you, Dr. Chevers. And now, turning the clicker over to Ms. Smith to give us a report on the Power Math Program.
So, Power Math is the name that somebody other than me came up with to describe a new class that we started offering at JFK this year, which is a math intervention class. And so I put together a slideshow to kind of tell you about it. So I'm not going to say much other than to go through these slides and then answer questions. So the course name is Power Math, and it is new this year, and I am teaching it as well as developing the curriculum. So what is Power Math? Power Math is a small group, four to eight students in math intervention class. It is a second, short-term, ranging from six to 10 weeks, full math class for the students who are involved. It is individualized and differentiated instruction. It is focused on advanced problem solving. It is aligned with grade level standards, and it is aligned with the content being taught by all of the JFK grade level math teachers. It is supporting students with strategies for self-advocacy, and it is supplemental instruction in numeracy skills and concepts as needed by the students. What instructional methods and resources are being implemented? Core of what I'm teaching comes from the Five Practices for Orchestrating Productive Mathematics Discussions by Margaret Smith and Mary Stein, which is something that Dr. Chevers has provided professional development for the entire math community at JFK, and I believe also at the high school, because we did some joint things, and they're doing also some stuff. So this is something that all the teachers are rolling out, but I'm focusing very highly on it. I'm also using things called three-act tasks, which were originally developed by Dan Meyer and Andrew Stadel. These are problems specially developed to help students develop their own concrete strategies for solving complex mathematical problems. And I use a lot of their tasks, but I've also had training now in how to take any math task and make it a three-act task. So I do a lot of creating of my own three-act tasks at this point. I'm also using Open Up Resources, which was developed by Illustrious Mathematics, which is the program that, right now, we are piloting here at JFK in math as a resource to go with our curriculum. It is, right now, coexisting with Big Ideas, which is another resource that goes with the curriculum that the CTLs have written over the last five years. Both Big Ideas and Illustrious Mathematics are keyed to the state standards. So the curriculum, the math curriculum here at JFK is keyed very highly and tightly towards the state standards, and we're using Open Up Resources and Big Ideas concurrently as tools to help the students meet the state standards. I'm also using WEADA and DESI English proficiency benchmarks in Power Math, because, as you'll see in a few minutes, there's a significant number of students who end up in Power Math who are English language learners. So the next question is, how were students selected to be in Power Math? Again, this was a decision made by somebody other than me, but a really solid one. We took the students who were at the very top of partially meeting expectations. So they're students who have not fully met the state expectations by really only a few points on MCAS. Literally, the first half of the year, all of the students I saw in Power Math scored anywhere from 499 to 495 on MCAS. So they were sitting very much at the top of that lower-middle quadrant. So who are these students? 100 students and their families have been offered Power Math so far this year. 78 families, or 78% have accepted our invitation, do actually enroll in the course. Nine out of 78 students, or 12% of those students who have taken or are currently taking, are former or current English language learners. Nope, that didn't come out so well in the final one. I'm sorry about that. That's my fault. The racial composition of Power Math. 64% white, 17% Hispanic or Latino, 6% Asian, 5% black or African-American, 3% Native, 3% American Indian or Alaskan Native, and 5% reporting mixed race. That's taken right out of family reportings that were put into Aspen. More Power Math numbers. 54 students have completed Power Math at this point in the year. Two students completed two sessions of Power Math on teacher recommendation. They were sixth graders, so instead of having six weeks, they had 12 weeks of Power Math. 24 students are currently taking Power Math. An average of two students a week have been attending informal after-school help sessions two days a week, offered to any current or former Power Math students who want support with any math. Oops, hello. There we go. Profile of a typical Power Math student. 90% overall appear solid in memorized math facts. They're really pretty strong in basic math. All of them lack flexibility in their abilities to manipulate numbers when calculating. These students also have significant deficits in their understanding of how our number system is built. That's part of that lack of flexibility. They don't, they know one way to do things. 40 to 50% of them have significant gaps in their understanding of how the basic operations of addition, subtraction, multiplication, and division grow out of our number system. They cannot see patterns within problems which would be or are clear to students who have a stronger working knowledge of the structure of our base 10 number system. 95% of the Power Math students have high levels of math anxiety, and 100% of the students who come into Power Math have low levels of self-advocacy skills when they enter the Reasons- class. Reasons families have given us for why they decline participation in Power Math when it is offered. So far, we've heard that parents don't feel that MCAS alone should be the basis for their intervention. Parents said that their child feels singled out, is bad at math, and inclusion in this class makes them feel that in a stronger way. Sometimes the child themselves resist having a second math class. Sometimes they give us no reason. They simply say politely, no, thank you. Parents feel that their child simply had a bad day when they took MCAS. After all, the child has earned high marks in math all the way through school, and that is another feature of all of these students. They all have earned As and Bs pretty solidly through their math career. So what am I doing for progress monitoring? I'm working on finding and developing effective progress monitoring tools. It's a little bit more challenging than perhaps I thought it would be. We tried AIMS Web, which is something the district already has and already uses for students who are struggling, and discovered that it had limited value, as most of these students have relatively strong mathematical computation skills, especially when they're tested in isolation on tests such as AIMS Web. The Math Recovery Numeracy Assessments give more information about how students compose and decompose numbers as they calculate, and understandings and misunderstandings that the students hold about the structure of our number system. These assessments are tricky to give, as they are mostly given in a one-on-one settings, and we didn't build allowance for that into my schedule and into the way the course is set up. But I am using them on a limited basis. I'm currently involved in training. I just completed this week the final of 10 days' worth of training through Math Recovery Council, which will put me more fluent in this wide array of assessments than they have. One math recovery assessment, the Units Coordination Assessment, has been very helpful, something that I can give to every student as a group. They take it individually, but it doesn't involve me administering it in the same way. And it asks students to unpack their understanding, there are only seven problems on it, but it takes most of the students about 45 minutes, sometimes as much as 60 minutes to finish it. It asks the students to unpack their understanding of how numbers build upon each other, and it's a strong predictor of how easily or not students will master the concepts of fractions, which then lead on to algebra and higher mathematics with ratio and unit rate and similarity and everything that uses fractions. The vast majority of students who have come into Power Math have scored at a construct one or two out of five on the Units Coordination Assessment, which is quite low, but not out of the box nationwide, but it is, it means they need some intervention. It's another validation of that. Classroom Teacher Feedback. 80% of the classroom teachers surveyed reported that they see a difference in students' class performance before Power Math participation versus after Power Math participation. 80% of classroom teachers surveyed reported that the students who have taken Power Math seem to be calmer, more focused, and less defiant in math class. 80% of classroom teachers surveyed reported that students who have completed Power Math are more likely to participate in whole-class discussions. 75% of classroom teachers surveyed reported that students who have taken Power Math have lower levels of math anxiety in math class. 80% of classroom teachers surveyed reported students who have taken Power Math are visibly more confident than they were pre-Power Math. 100% of classroom teachers surveyed feel that the Power Math curriculum is addressing areas that are helping students. Classroom Teacher Quotes. I gave out a survey recently that collected all of this information from the teachers, and I heard, I am seeing more confidence in their reasoning and strategies. I've seen students be willing to consider multiple strategies for the same problem when before I would not see that. And my Power Math kids have a pretty wide array of personalities and work habits before and after Power Math. I see improved engagement and persistence overall. I also have given the survey to all of the students who have come through Power Math, and these are statistics here. First, there'll be some quotes in a minute. 50% of students who have taken Power Math report, quote, I am doing okay in Power Math class. I can understand most of the math we are learning, but I feel like I need a bit more practice with new topics before I'm really confident. 37% of students who have taken Power Math report feeling like a rock star in Power Math class. They can understand the math, and they can solve the problems. 13% of students who have taken Power Math report feeling a bit overwhelmed, both in Power Math and regular math class on some days. 73% report that Power Math helped them to do better in their regular math class, and 77% reported that Power Math has put them in a position where they can understand the math in the regular classroom, but sometimes they need a bit of extra time to work through So these are some student quotes. I do add that they are non-edited. I took them directly from the surveys, and I felt it was truer to just have you hear their words and their spellings and their thoughts. So pardon the grammar. I have learned a lot about math, and that you were a great teacher and taught me a lot about math, and if I wasn't in Power Math, I wouldn't know a lot about math, right? But thanks to you, I do know a lot now. Thank you. I'm not sure I can take all the credit, but I think Power Math can take the credit. I struggle a lot in my regular math class, and this has kind of helped. You have taught me so much about math and how to solve problems and make me more confident with math. Power Math helps you achieve new levels of math and helps you understand math easily. I really think you would enjoy it, and you should take it. These quotes were taken from two open-ended questions. One that asked the students to tell me anything they needed me to know about Power Math or my teaching, and the other one was, what would you tell somebody who was thinking about Power Math but hadn't decided if they were willing to take it? So that's, you'll see a mix here. There are a few more here. It will help you. It might seem unnecessary, but it helped me. I got my grade up from a B to an A in regular math from this class. I would say that Power Math is a very helpful class. If I didn't do Power Math, I don't know where I would be or what I would do in my math class. I am so thankful that I took this class. Power Math helps and makes you feel more confident with math. You should take it. It really helped me. And if you are struggling with math, then take this class, because I was able to really understand after taking that class in my normal math class. And to be fair, I didn't put it in, but one student did say, this is a second math class. If you don't like math, don't take two math classes. So I also have gotten a lot of parent emails reflecting on Power Math. Most of them have been extremely positive, and these are just some quotes from some of those emails. She went into it with low confidence and low self-esteem. I asked her how she thought she did on the MCAS, Math MCAS, and she said, due to the length of the test, she got frustrated and tired and just began guessing at the math answers to get through it. Although we were reluctant, Power Math turned out to be an amazing class. Completely reestablished my daughter's self-esteem and confidence in math, and also taught her as a student and young lady to advocate for herself. I wanted to thank and appreciate you, first, for your investment in helping blank succeed in math through your work with the Power Math curriculum, and secondly, and equally important, for making my daughter feel connected. Blank reports back very positive things about the class, and we do want him to grow in his sense of self-efficacy and just play numeracy, so we are totally on board. My takeaways. These very capable students carry a huge amount of math and MCAS anxiety, even if their parents have never shared their MCAS scores with them. Their fundamental skills of multiplication and division are good, not fabulous, but they lack the ability to comfortably apply those skills in problem-solving situations. As a group, they rush. They fly through math as if to be the first finished, means they have established their They do not work together with any organization or efficiency. They each assume that someone else in the group will and should do the work of thinking mathematically. And in what seems like a catch-22, they also do not work well individually. When asked to work alone, I get comments such as, I can't do this. I'm stuck. I don't know where to start. I need help. This doesn't make any sense. To be clear, this does not happen because they are mathematically stuck. This happens, I think, because they are emotionally stuck. I'm not giving them problems they have not seen or problems for which they lack the computational skills to solve. And that's it. Do you have any questions?
Thank you very much. Comments or questions about? Yes?
It seems like there's some real value in the class. Two-part question for you. First off, can you explain kind of the rationale behind limiting it to students who are only a couple points away from passing MCAS? And then the second part, do we have other interventions in place for students who are just below that threshold who don't get into this class?
Let Dr. Provost take that.
Okay. As Ms. Smith indicated, there was someone else who made that decision. That was me. But it wasn't, it wasn't an arbitrary decision. It's an evidence-based decision. So one of the things that, essentially what we're doing here is a tiered system of support. And one of the differences between tiered systems of support at middle school and elementary school is, in elementary school, you take the students who are most struggling and prioritize those. In middle, and the reason that you do that is because the developmental window is still open, and you can have a big impact on them. In middle school, the evidence-based model is to take the students who have the least need, because the developmental window is almost closed. And you're not likely to be successful with students who are far away from achieving proficiency. And so with a limited, limited amount of resources, you have to apply them with the students who you have a reasonable chance of success for. So students who are farther, farther away from proficiency will only be successful with a Level III intervention, such as special education.
Member Gold?
I would throw out there, it'd be interesting to see, like, in terms of like, the impact of this and looking at their MCAS, and as you, since you picked them based on MCAS, you know, next you're seeing specifically their SGP data, their student growth data, to see if, how they did comparably to other kids in that zone.
They're staying really connected to me. The kids that have sort of exited Power Math, that have finished their short-term intervention, come see me all the time. They come see me after school. They, I'm on duty upstairs with the seventh and eighth graders in the morning. They come to talk to me about what they're doing in math class. They show up at my door for after-school help when they have a test. They're really, they've really bought into this idea that it's really cool to have somebody who knows them really well, who's just interested in how they feel confidence-wise in terms of their math. And so it feels like a really strong and lasting connection, which I think is what you want.
Member Ross?
So thank you. I really enjoyed this, and I think, you know, a lot of it is that this is an opportunity for them, and then what you bring to it, and that you really care about these higher-level things of giving them the confidence and teaching them to ask questions, and it's okay not to know. So thank you. And I think having these small classes, did you say four to 10 in a?
Four to eight at this point, yeah.
And it enables them to get that relationship and to keep working on it. And it just, I wish all the kids who aren't performing in math could have this experience.
It's interesting. This group has a very specific set, a very specific profile and a very specific set of needs that are really easy to overlook. I've been a classroom teacher for 30 years, and I, I knew going into this who the kids would be that I had last year that would show up in Power Math. And they have, every single one of them. And because they're the students who are really solid, high-B, low-A students, they, you know, general ed math setting, they're pretty much invisible. They don't make waves. They do their work. They appear to participate, but they also step back every single chance they get.
Yeah. So, sorry, I was just, I guess the things I was gonna ask were, or that really struck me include two things. One, they really are missing something, and you're helping them get it. And the question is, why are they going through and getting Bs and As, and why aren't we figuring that out and giving them more support in other places in addition to this? And then the other thing that really struck me is, I understand that MCAS was a good method to select this group, but when we ask parents for them to participate in it, I wonder if, it's just a, I'm just wondering, I'm not saying this is right, but if it might be a broader, you know, we've identified the child and maybe use that as part of it, but also teacher recommendation, just so it's broader than just this MCAS score. I don't know. But it seems like some parents didn't want to listen about that.
Dr. Provost?
Can I take a few of those things?
Yeah.
So I think you've put your finger on a very important question. And I think the answer is because we're not doing standards-based grading. One of the things that you'll see in the budget presentation, well, you've already seen, coming up is a request for some support to try to go to standards-based grading. One of the other challenges that I heard from counselors, I'm not sure if they shared this with you too, but one of the things I heard from counselors is, why are you picking my child? He's gotten As and Bs all along. I don't think there, that there are any gaps there. And I think in a non-students-based grading system, that can easily happen, because sometimes we grade on things other than the student's actual performance, like their behavior, et cetera. So that's one thing. On the other, the question about why MCAS, that also is a best practice for trying to do tiered support at the secondary level, because you always have this tension between, how much time do you want to spend assessing students, and how much time do you want to spend intervening? With elementary kids, we do AIMS Web and all our own assessments, because we're trying to get to kids before they even are old enough to be assessed on the state system. What the research says around middle school and up is just use your state system, because you're gonna find the same kids if you administer other assessments anyways. And to the question about teacher recommendation, one of the things that I think was most powerful about this is, not only do I think that the teachers from last year may not have picked a lot of these kids based on that they were giving them As and Bs, but I heard teachers from the middle school saying, I'm surprised this child was picked for an intervention. You know, I thought this child was not an at-risk student, but saw a difference when they had an opportunity to work with you. So there's that.
That's, that's really, really true. I mean, and that's not to say that the teachers don't have piles and piles of students they would recommend for different types of intervention, because they do. There's never enough money or resources to help everybody the way we really would like to. But it's universal, it's a surprise of teachers about, oh, those are the students that are in Power Math, versus, you know, oh, wow, I'm glad that student was in Power Math. They've really shifted all of a sudden. And so it's a visible shift that happens, but not, but not per se a predictable one, I guess.
Just one more comment. I guess it doesn't surprise me that the kids do seem to have some math anxiety, because they clearly care about getting good grades. They're working hard, they're behaving, and fitting this picture you're presenting here, but they probably know they really don't understand it as well as it looks, so, you know.
I, I'm not convinced yet as to whether it's an understanding issue. There's something else going on that's multi-layered as well. And it has to do with self-perception, with, when you've got five kids in front of you, they can't hide, and you give them a problem that you know they can do, and their first response is, oh, sorry, you blew it. That one won't work. You have to pick a different one. We can't do that one. And you take them through a process that's generally five or six or seven steps long, sometimes several days, and lead them to the point where they have just solved a problem that they went public with and said they couldn't solve, and something changes in them. And I haven't, honestly, I'm not teaching multiplication, division, fractions. I'm not teaching basic skills. I'm teaching sort of freedom of math thought, in a way. I don't know. Other than that, I don't know.
Eleanor, that'll come to you. Member Goldman.
I just wanted to say that I think this is a really interesting program, and I really, I'm very appreciative of it, even though I'm a senior in high school and I, you know, I'm not a middle schooler, but I think some, you know, the whole confidence issue around math, and I think the, the thought process behind solving math math and I think the thought process behind solving math problems and thinking about it in a way like, you know, like understanding your own skill set and what you can and can't do is, I think, a struggle for students of all math levels. And I don't think it's just, you know, students who are in this range of almost meeting expectations, but I think, I mean, I've, just personal experience, have pretty consistently like met or exceeded expectations on MCAS in school, but I've also struggled a lot with, you know, figuring out how to like apply what I do know to math problems that don't seem, aren't as straightforward. And I think that it's really important to be thinking about that and how, you know, it's especially as math classes get harder as you go along, you know, in elementary school and earlier in middle school, I think it's, math is pretty straightforward and it's memorization and like applying just memorized things to pretty straightforward problems. And as math increases in difficulty, it becomes harder to apply what you know. And I think with that, there's a confidence issue and, you know, because it's more difficult, it's harder to understand how your knowledge can be applied and so I think, but saying that, it's always, you know, if you have that, you know, whenever, if you have that extra support, you know, that's more one-on-one, it's so much, or at least for me, it's been so much easier to see what I do know and to see how it's, how I can apply it to a certain problem. And I think it's always real, it's been eye-opening for me, especially in the past couple of years, just like, you know, it's hard for me to solve a math problem independently, but when I'm working with a group of students or with a teacher one-on-one, it's, you know, easier for me to get there. And it takes me a lot, a much shorter amount of time. So I don't know, I think this is a really great program and it seems like you're really like hitting the nail on the head with what the issue is and I don't, and I think one of the questions is like, yeah, why is it, why is this a problem? Why is it so hard for students to build that confidence and to use, to understand what they know and to apply it, like especially in math?
Member Goldman.
I just want to take a moment to thank you and really look at the work you're doing here. I think it's so clear that you're doing it very skillfully and compassionately and just creating that kind of support for the students. And I think that that would translate across for them in other ways. The answer about the standard space grading might apply to this question, but I'm wondering if there's a way that students are provided support in test-taking, just test-taking prep in general at any level.
So I guess I'll answer individualistically. You know, I've always said that we should teach to the standards and let the chips fall where they may. I really don't want this school to become a test prep shop. There are some places where, you know, I have seen a little bit of test prep going on, but I don't think it's, you know, endemic in the district because I think that can be really negative. Like, so in one of the districts I've worked in, we, there was a required course called Test Sophistication, which was basically strategies for guessing when you didn't know the answer, which I think is the worst possible, you know, version of the madness that test prep can go to. So the issue around anxiety also, I think, kind of can be exacerbated by if everyone's prepping for the test, we're giving the message of, oh, this is a really important test. And for kids who worry about their performance, I think that makes it worse for them. So, you know, and from my perspective, I think it's better to downplay that, but that's just my feeling.
Yeah, that's great, thank you.
Member Sarah F. Cox.
Of course, I'll echo the kudos from the rest of my colleagues. Also, I was very interested that you gave the racial demographics of your group. Do you find gender demographics that are different from the rest of the school?
Turns out I don't. I thought in the beginning, when we first started, that there were more girls about to be enrolled in Power Math and, because it was looking on the very first round that there was like 75% or 78% female students. It just was luck of the draw. As we've gone further on, it has completely equaled out now. I think it's, I did the statistics on it because I was expecting it to be heavy on the female side and it's like 56 to, you know, I can't do math this time.
Forty-four percent.
Fifty-six to.
Forty-four.
And so it's really very balanced now. Yeah.
Other questions? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay. So that completes our report phase of the agenda and we'll now move into some donations and some other votes. We have a vote, we have a donation from National Grid of $5,000 for the Robotics Club. Is there any further explanation other than that script or no?
It's for the high school, high school robotics. I have a number of them now.
Okay. I would entertain a motion to accept that donation from National Grid.
Motion to accept the donation from National Grid.
Second.
So the motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Great. Next, we have a donation from the Leeds Elementary PTO of $2,074.48, a guess worth of water bottles. I'm assuming these are reusable water bottles for drinking water?
They are.
Okay.
They're the actual bottles, they're not money for the bottles.
Okay, they are the actual bottle, okay, worth of bottles, okay. Is there a motion to accept this gift?
Motion to accept the gift from Leeds Elementary PTO in the amount of $2,074.48 for water bottles.
Is there a second? Okay, great. All those in favor of that gift, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. This next gift is actually, this is from DA Sullivan and Sons Incorporated, Mark Sullivan, who is a NPS alum and the parent of NPS alums, has been generously over time making sort of strategic gifts to the city and to the schools. And when we had our discussion this year, one of the ideas that I pitched to him, he was a former chair of the planning board who just stepped down after many years, and those of you who've been in the council chambers know that we've converted from these sort of older-fashioned PowerPoint projectors to a digital display, which has advantages in terms of interactivity. It also allows for direct connectivity to North Hampton Media so they can actually run the slideshow through the actual, as opposed to taking a grainy video of the slideshow. And so they're essentially going to work with our IT department to make possible the installation of that type of a system here in the community room that will be used for school committee, but will also be accessible for learning in the school as well. So first step is to see whether the school committee would accept that type of a system in school property, and then I have to go to the city council to actually have the financial gift accepted and appropriated to the ITS department. So I hope I'm pushing on an open door on this one. Is there a motion to accept that gift of this new display presentation system?
So moved.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Excellent. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? So again, I'll be taking this to the city council at their next meeting to actually complete the, because it's not an actual, they're actually giving us the money, which then has to be appropriated for that purpose. So thank you very much for that and obviously thank you to Mark and the DA Sullivan and Sons Company, which is actually the oldest company in North Hampton. They are, they are the oldest, they're, I think, fourth-generation family-owned business, so they're very unique and they've, you know, actually built some of our municipal buildings and some of our school buildings. And so anyway, they have really deep roots to the community, so I really appreciate their generosity. The next is a request of a vote to delegate authority to Dr. Provost to negotiate an MOU, memorandum of understanding, for an extended-day nurse for one student. And I'll turn to Dr. Provost to give us just an explanation of that.
Sure. Thank you. We're about to enroll a student who is extremely medically fragile. The student requires nursing services constantly and may require life-saving procedures at any time of the day, including from the moment that the student gets on the bus throughout the school day to the time that the student is returned to their house. So obviously, when you add on the morning ride and the afternoon ride, we would be in violation of Article Four, which is ours, but it would be very much beneficial to try to do this with one person rather than splitting it halfway through the day and having two part-timers. So I would like to work with the union to see if we can find an accommodation that would make sense for an employee to do this very specific service, not meant to do, to create any kind of precedent for nurses across the district, but just to address this specific need.
So could I have a motion to authorize the superintendent to negotiate that MOU?
So moved.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. Similar, another request for an MOU and the authorization for Dr. Provost to do that, and that is to adjust the preschool schedule by three days for staff to attend training. Dr. Provost?
As I noted in my email, we actually think we have a different solution for this one, so I don't think we need one like that.
Okay, excellent. I clearly didn't read the email carefully enough. So next, this is a vote to approve foster care reimbursement. This is another one of these two-step processes. This is a new program of reimbursement specifically for transportation for foster care children who are coming out of their home district to be in foster care. And then, much like homeless children, we transport them back to their home district. So there's a new program. I did take an order to the city council for a first reading at their last meeting, basically authorizing the school department to enter into an MOU with D, is it DCF and EOEAHS and DESI. It's like a three-way agreement. And that's sort of one of the requirements of this, but then obviously it requires the school committee to also approve the acceptance of this reimbursement. It's not obviously full reimbursement, but it's at least partial reimbursement of those transportation costs. And it's very analogous to the McKinney-Vento reimbursement that we get for homeless transportation. So is there, did I get that correctly?
To approve the foster care transportation reimbursement?
Is there a second? Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Excellent. And again, the second reading on that will come up at the city council, so it should align Kami for the end of the month.
We need to have it submitted by March 1st.
Exactly.
It's first quarter.
Yeah, so they'll be taking their second vote next Thursday, so we'll have the authorization to do that.
Thank you.
Next is the vote to delegate authority to sign bill warrants. This is something practiced that we began last year to try to streamline the district's ability to pay its bills on time. And so rather than having to have a majority of the body sign these warrants, it's been delegated to typically two members who act as, you know, principal and backup to sign those on a weekly basis. And so my recommendation is that we would delegate that authority to Member Fallon and with myself serving as the backup. I've been sort of the backup plan since I'm sort of City Hall and close by and I signed the bill warrants for the city similarly, so, but Miss, Member Fallon has agreed to take that on. I've checked with other members, I checked with members of, but because of conflicts and work schedules, I couldn't quite find the right person to do it, but Member Fallon has.
Once again.
Into the breach, so my request would be a vote to delegate that authority to Member Fallon and myself to serve as the co-warrant signers for the district's bill warrants.
Do you want a motion?
Sure.
All right. I move that Member Fallon with backup from Mayor Narkowitz are delegated to sign the bill warrants.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. Next, we move to, it's start time. And this is, this was an item that was, that was continued from our last meeting, and so it appears back on our agenda as a discussion and possible vote. It's obviously something that we had a workshop discussion about and to sort of get us, try to catch us all up on sort of the long, winding history of this issue. And so, Dr. Provost, do you have any sort of summative thoughts on this?
I have nothing additional to add, I would just say for the public, this is a plan that would move the start and end times of all schools half an hour later.
Yeah, that was sort of the one that we had, the one piece that the committee had asked you to do outreach and research and, you know, discussion, and we've gotten reports from students, we've gotten reports from NACE surveys as well, so it now just kind of lands back here again. So I put it out to the members for continued discussion or continuation or whatever you choose. Susie, Member Voss, you speak.
I don't, I came thinking about it because of the retreat-like meeting we had about it, so would it be appropriate to try to make a motion that I think, I think sums up kind of where we got at that meeting?
Okay.
Would that be a place to start? And certainly, we can vote it down or amend it.
Sure.
And I don't have it written out, so I'll just do it off the top of my head, but the motion would be something like, the committee feels that it is important to find a way to start our high school later, recognizing several years ago, I don't know how many, a former school committee recommended starting the high school between 8:00 and 8:30. And collectively, we feel we need to consider a wider range of options in order to best serve all K through 12 students. And a path forward that we see, and I don't want to speak for everyone, I'm summarizing, would be to commit to identifying three scenarios by September and voting on the one we feel is best, recognizing that there will be pros and cons of any scenario that comes up, but to acknowledge that we are committed to doing that work by September, perhaps having some public comment and voting by October roughly, and that by fall of 2021, that there would be a later start time. That's where, that's what I took away, I think.
Is there a second for purposes of discussion?
Second.
Okay.
And I think I loved it right up until your very last sentence where a few of us were a little reluctant to commit to a later start time in advance of knowing what the solution was, what the budget was, where we were as far as the community discussions. And so I think that I would be happy with an ending exactly where you were, when you said that we would vote on those three scenarios in September. But remember, we had talked about, well, what happens if we don't all agree on it and what happens, you know, there were so many other issues. So just to maintain- there were so many other issues. So just to maintain the public's trust, I don't want to commit to something a year and a half in advance if we aren't sure how we're going to make that happen. That's all.
Okay.
And I would just amend that to say that while we may not be committing to something that we don't know the details of, I think we, I think we universally agree that we need a later start time for the high school, and we want to make it clear, I would like to make it clear to the public, that our voting, basically no on this current proposal that pushes all school start times a half hour later, does not mean we're not committed to pushing the high school start time later. It just means we want to find a solution to that that doesn't also then move the elementary school start time later. And I'll add that, I don't know how many of you saw, it came in at 9:00 tonight, so you may not have, a very long email from a community member urging us to really consider the history and to not start from scratch here. And so I think as we move this conversation out into the subcommittee, which is, I believe, what our recommendation is going to be, that that subcommittee really does do that work that you mentioned, Member Voss, of engaging the community, engaging the historic research that's been done, to ensure we're not starting over, but that we're finding a solution that best meets the needs of the community.
So, just to keep us on this, the motion was made and seconded for discussion. We've getting some discussion. Member Buzansky, do you want to add to that?
I like the, I really like the proposal that Member Voss made. I think where I, and I think it's important, of course, to keep the public's trust, but I think it's also important at the end of the day that we've got to make a decision on this, and that we can just, we've kicked the can down the field for about 10 years now, and we can keep doing that. And I thought that one, one of the things that came out in our retreat was just this idea, if we had three proposals, maybe we could do ranked choice voting. I liked that idea that came up at the time, but, you know, we're going to, at the end of the day, to make the high school, to get the high school to a later start time, there's going to be some pros and cons, and not everyone's going to be happy with it, and we've got to come up with a decision. And so just to get to September, October, and be right back in the same place again, where we say, nope, we got three proposals, we don't want to do any of them, that to me is even worse in terms of, you know, what we're putting the public through. So to me, I want to be able to commit that, and we all know that we have to make this decision in enough time to let the community know, make sure people feel comfortable with it, they can change their schedules, but we've got a, but we have to, I'd like to be on the school committee that makes that decision, because I just don't think it can go on much longer. So I'm willing to kind of run that risk, that, and that we can just vote on something.
I'll second Member Buzansky's feelings about this. I think getting the current committee
up to speed by that time should give us enough knowledge and history to make a best educated choice. And like you said, there's going to be no perfect choice, no matter how much effort and time we put into it, so we need to do something. So making that commitment really puts the pressure on us to do the work to make it happen.
Member Voss?
Oh, I'll add to that. I think recognizing the history and that a former school committee said this has to happen, and we're all acknowledging, we agree with that it has to happen, saying, and I understand, Member Fallon, it's uncomfortable when we don't know how it's going to happen, but for me, I'm thinking we have a fallback plan, and we already know that it's not ideal for some of the community, but the, in my mind, the fallback plan is you just put every school back half an hour, and, and, you know, maybe not everybody agrees with that perspective, but that's where I am sitting here, and yet I have this hope that we can figure out a different way. I think some of the bus schedules have changed since 2015, and maybe there's some other creative ways of mixing things up. And I think that's what I heard at the retreat. People want the chance to try to hear more ideas, but at the same time, telling the public, this is not, we don't want to go through an argument, should we do it or shouldn't we do it? It's more a conversation of how are we going to do it? And so I want the motion to reflect that, so I don't want the public to be worried that we're not going to do it.
Member Fallon?
So I am just going to say that I want the public to know that I support a later start time. I am not going to vote in favor of this, because exactly what you said, we have a fallback plan. I don't support the fallback plan. And so we've heard from teachers, we've heard from students, we've heard, read the research, that moving the elementary schools later is not ideal, and I would struggle with that decision. And so I'm not going to commit to making the high school later at any cost in the fall without knowing the decision we're going to come to, and so that's my rationale. I hope we do find a solution, and I will work really hard with everyone to find a solution, but that's exactly why I don't feel comfortable committing to doing, to definitely doing it at any cost and voting on it in October, because I'm not happy with all of the alternatives.
Any, Dr. Provost?
I wonder if I could just, I'm really thinking of any here, because there were so many words in that and so many other things, and I'm a little bit unclear on what the base motion is to put in the, so I want to run this by you and see if this is correct. To consider three options for achieving a high school start time between 8:00 and 8:30, and to vote to approve one of them by October 2020. I don't know if that's it, but that's.
That's the boiled-down essence of what you were saying, we should be, we should have three proposals and take a vote on it by October 2020.
The reason I'm hesitating is because the last committee said 8:00 to 8:30, and I think that was based on a lot of important information. Some of it's possibly changed with sports. I don't know the answer to that, but I don't, if we reordered some of the schools, I don't know if 8:00 to 8:30 is limiting. What if it was 8:45 to make the buses work? So that's why I'm sitting here. Everything else about it is on the right track for me.
I think you did say 8:00 to 8:30.
I absolutely did. I absolutely did.
So do you want to just?
So we're still discussing.
So do you want to just take out, so do you want to just take out the time and not commit to a time and just say a later start time?
At least, I would say. Sorry.
Sure.
At least 8:00.
At least 8:00 or later.
Okay. Not 7:36 or something like that.
And the other thing that I didn't say in my way-too-long motion is, we had discussed asking the Budget and Property Subcommittee to find a roadmap for this. I don't know if that's the right answer either, but that's part of.
So the idea would be, well, you could pass the motion and then refer.
Okay, fine.
Like, is that the other piece of it? Or you could build into the motion that Budget and Property will lead the, will take the leadership of this initiative?
I'm okay keeping it as simple as possible.
Okay. Sorry, Member Con.
Question for Dr. Provost. Is October a reasonable decision time for the following school year? Do we have more leeway beyond that? Or is October really when it should be decided by for the following school year? I think October is probably as late as we would want to go, because there would be some cost involved with changing the contract that we would need to be able to build into the budget. I wouldn't want to start it, say, in November, December, and then not know the cost, increased cost of the contract until after we're far into the budget process. So I would say this is probably the latest, although I would defer to Kami.
I think it's about right. By the time we negotiate with NACE and any contract with the bus company that we need to negotiate, if there's some major movement, I would think we would need to have all that information by January, February, to put it in place and know what that cost might be, if anything.
Number Gold?
I'm a little confused, because it sounds, if I'm, am I understanding correctly that we would vote on one of three, to approve one of three plans in October? And I guess I'm misunderstanding from what we talked the, at the last meeting. I thought by October we would have three plans, and for which we would then discuss and figure out one of those plans to start in September 2021. I mean, we almost voted in January for a plan to start this year, right? So, I mean, it seems like even January was an option. So I just, I would be, I would not be able to confidently, I couldn't vote yes if we were going to decide on the plan in October. I could vote yes if we were going to commit to having the three plans, and I thought this, the whole thing from their retreat or that other meeting we had was to develop a process so that we can have a later start time come September 2021. So.
Dr. Provost?
This is not an attempt to advocate for or against, but just to explain that what may seem as a discrepancy, I felt that we could make a decision in January regarding the 30-minute plan, because there would be no change to anything in the bus contract. Some of the other three options that could be considered might involve a change in the bus contract, which is why I would want that vote to be submitted.
I was just, my original motion, which I'd like to go back to, was to say the three plans would be available in September. The goal would be for them to be there in September and presented, so that there would be a month for discussion. I don't know if a month's long enough, but yeah.
I want to make sure that in whatever timeline we are discussing, we're building in time to get community support and buy-in and feedback, and I don't know if we're gonna, if that is baked into the creation of the three plans, or if we come up with three plans and then we're going to go to the community, say, what works? And I just want to make sure that we're not saying, okay, we're going to have three plans in September, we'll vote in October, and we're also thinking we're going to get that community conversation in, in that short amount of time. So I wonder if there's a way to almost leave the specifics to be determined, maybe by the Subcommittee, pushed, so that we can ensure that the process allows community participation and conversation, all of the contract negotiation with NACE and the bus companies and so on, and whatever budgetary decisions need to be made. And I just wonder if there's a way for us to pass this right now without knowing all those details.
I like having it come by September, because then it's the start of the school year, everybody's back from vacation, and that's the time to start that community conversation. But then do you have to, you'd like it to be decided by October because of the budget, because of the contract flexibility?
Depending on what the options are. I mean, it may be that one of the options is another one that doesn't really impact, you know, contracts, and so it could have been later, but I won't know what you'll be picking.
Yeah. It's just you won't be able to be able to do a public process over the summer, because people are just not available, the staff's not available, so, but I'm comfortable with keeping it, you know, to just letting the committee come up with some of the specific timeline, but just the goal of getting three proposals here by September.
I don't want to cut you.
I was just going to ask, is there going to be an opportunity, I'd love for the Subcommittee to do the work on this, but is there an opportunity for the full committee to weigh in on it so that we don't have three options brought to us for a vote, and we actually don't really love any of the three? Like, I don't know at what point we can weigh in on what our preferences would be.
I think you could just post the, you could post Budget and Property meetings as full school committee meetings and then allow members to come if they want it. You know, they could, that way, it would allow for the possibility, sure, you can double post it as a meeting of the Budget and Property and the full committee. That way, if extra people want to show up and be part of the conversation, they could. They're not going to vote as part of the committee, but at least they could be there. So the council does that frequently on hot-button issues where they want to have an opportunity for more counselors to come and.
Just two things. I would say, if it does go to a Subcommittee, it would be smart for that Subcommittee to bring it back and share it with the public in this format as just a report on the Subcommittee. And then I wonder if instead of saying three proposals, just say multiple, so that it gives us more flexibility with, you know, the idea that we're thinking on the order of three, but.
It could be two.
It could be two, it could be four, you know, maybe strike gold. Maybe we don't need three.
If it's ten, we each favor one plan, and then it's a ten-way vote.
No, no.
Though I like the idea of, I don't know if it's realistic to have multiple proposals by September, but what is nice is then that gets, gives us the opportunity to bring it to open houses in September and present it there and make it, you know, more accessible, get more community feedback, et cetera, but that's, it's definitely a short timeline.
Non-member Lamaca.
I was wondering what you were going to call me. So only as a consideration, what if it's developed, options developed in between now and September, because we have budget pretty much until April or May.
Right.
So to try to double that with that, there are two major projects, but develop scenarios by September, present them to the full school committee and the public, and instead of October, what if it were November, but no later then? And that way you've got that 60-day window with people being back, open houses, whatever kind of groups, and committed to no later than November. If you can't make it by November, we're not going, depending on the scenario, obviously, like Dr. Provost said, it might not take that much, and it may take a lot. So we need to build that in. But I'm thinking November, the latest, but that would still give you a 60-day window, and it would be people coming back from vacation. Everybody would be back, and it would give us the time to develop it and not rush to get it done either. Just a suggestion.
So I don't know how that affects, or if you take that under advisement, I'm not sure. Do you want to change it to not three, but just multiple, just have multiple options?
Yeah, sure.
So what do you have so far?
I have to consider multiple options for achieving a high school start time of at least 8:00 or later.
Of 8:00 or later.
Yeah, of 8:00 or later, by September 2020.
And then is there no language about voting and all of that? Is that where it ends?
I thought that, I thought the discussion was about taking that out, wanting to see what they were.
I think I was the only person who said that.
Okay.
I wanted to make sure the rest.
Maybe we could get to consensus. So what if we proceeded it with recognizing the importance of a later high school start time, where the committee recognizes, I don't know. Somebody wants to be more aggressive, go for it.
Well, but I think, sort of along with Member Fallon was saying, and what, like, I think we want to put of saying that we will vote, and where Miss non-member Lamaca said, when did you say, November?
I was saying November.
Yeah, like, we will vote by November, because one of the reasons we want to do is so that the public knows this 2021 school year.
Exactly.
Start time, whether it stays the same or not. We might all vote no on it, but at least the public will know and not be waiting till now to think, when is school starting? So if we say, you know, plan, multiple plans available by September, with a school committee vote on it by November for the 2021 start time, and then we have the process and the public knows, at least they'll know by November at some.
Sorry, Member Buzansky, then, Member?
Well, I was just thinking in terms of what Member Fallon said, if, you know, if at the end of the day, we can't come back with multiple program ideas, I can think, and vote on them, then I just would like to put it to bed, at that point. Like, I'd like to say, we like gave everything we had. I think we can come up with a proposal, and we can make this happen, and I think it's incredibly important, but I also don't want us to just, you know, spend the next two years together, spending hours and hours on, just spinning our wheels, I guess, that, you know. So at that point, maybe we do need something that says if we can't figure it out, we are just going to leave it as is, but I believe we can figure it out, so I don't know if that makes it any more.
So I agree with what Member Voss said, and I believe with what you said earlier, and I also believe, I also believe what Member Fallon said, that I think we've got to say that we are committing to a later start time for the high school, and that we're committing to finding a way to do that that meets the needs of all students, so that we're not pushing our elementary school times later to the detriment of elementary school kids and families. And so, and I do think we owe it to the public, to your point, to not say, and maybe we're going to say we're not going to do it, because I- gonna say we're not gonna do it, because I think we've got to say, the school committee already voted previously, years ago, to have a later start time. We know that we have creative minds, there's been a lot of research, we can do it. I think we need to, I am advocating to say, to have language that says we are committing to voting on a solution that works for the majority of the populations of our, of our school districts. But having language that makes it clear that we're not gonna just pick something just to have a later start time that's to the detriment of another population.
Member Gold.
And just to clarify, sort of the way you're talking about putting it to bed, like, voting doesn't mean that it will happen in September. Voting just means that we're gonna vote on it. Like, we might not, we might all vote no, which.
On every proposal.
On every proposal. Like, that, by saying that we're gonna vote on it, I don't want us to mislead the public that we're gonna vote on it and there will be one plan accepted. Like, I just want to make sure we, however we say the motion, not saying that we are definitely having a later start time in September 2021. Like, we need to make sure that that's clear.
Sorry. I feel like there's some. Yeah, so what I was just saying was that we are saying that we're gonna have a later start time.
And that's why I was voting no.
Yeah, yeah. Then I'd say I'm not comfortable with that, because we might all, we might, like, there's, we might come back with three plans and not be able to have an agreement on it, and if we're.
Why, why can't we come up with three amazing plans that we?
It's taken 15 years and haven't been able to happen yet.
10, 10. We're 18 months away.
No, I don't, but I, but to tell the public we're gonna have a later start time, and then us to sit here in November and not be able to agree on a start time, like, that's a tough situation to be in, you know? And we're representing our constituents, and so.
Member Busansky.
We don't have to agree, we just have to vote.
Right.
And the winning vote, you know, I mean, it could be, you know, like we talked, I mean, I hear what you're struggling with. I definitely hear what you're struggling with, and I, and I, but at the same time, yeah, that's all.
Member Fallon, I'd like to make a comment.
I liked the wording that member Levi said about Levy. I like so, I gave it so much thought, and I still swear to God.
For every possible.
Not letting. And I'm so proud for the member part. Anyway, I liked the wording where it was, "We're committed to this," but I stopped short of it, because I, I have to be honest, there are school committees all over this state and all over the country as determined and creative and smart as we are, who can't get it done, and that's what scares me. You don't think that everyone who has sat at this table for the last how many years has wanted to make this happen? I think that it's just, I get that if we say it, it will be, but I also am trying to be realistic and say, there are monetary issues, if the override fails, we're already making cuts, we, how would we possibly take on more expenses that might be incurred as a result of it? Like, it always comes down to money and contracts, and some of the best solutions for the students may be the most expensive solutions to pay for, and so then, you know, that's a totally different discussion. So we could make it happen at any cost, but I, I want to find the right solution, and that's why I feel like I can't say with 100% certainty that it's gonna happen.
Member Voss, then, Dr.?
So I would be in favor of the language that, now you're making me think hard, member Levy suggested, and again, I think we aren't gonna come up with a solution that everyone's happy with that doesn't cost money. And when you talk to community members, this is one of the biggest things you hear about what, you know, knocking on doors, running for this to represent the community, this is really important to people, and I feel like bringing that, that's an important point to make, in terms of what might we have to give up. And I agree with you, Ms. Fallon, if the override doesn't pass, if we're sitting here, how are we gonna afford this? But I also know that among everything our community wants, this is pretty high up on the list, and people feel really strongly that this is gonna be one of the most important things for their students at the high school level in terms of getting more sleep. And I guess I'm not a fan of the current, I understand the current proposal, which is to put each school back half an hour, because it's cost-neutral and it does the job, and so there's a lot, there's a lot of good there. I also understand the concerns about younger children going to school later and the difficult effect that has on families and potentially on learning for younger kids, which is why I am in favor of us spending this extra year trying to figure out a better solution than that. But I think we have to figure something out, and so, you know, I guess I'm ready to say I'm, it's not gonna be perfect, but we have to do something.
So, I do have to say, I am the one person here who did actually vote to implement late start. It lasted for about 30 days, and then we reversed it, but we did actually vote to do it. We actually voted to eliminate high school busing, so that made it really easy.
Exactly.
This was before the last override, seven years ago, it was one of the cuts. So like, we could set the time whenever we wanted, it was not ideal, and then we put busing back in when the override passed, but, so, what do you, what is the current status of the motion?
I actually don't know.
Okay.
There hasn't really been any formal amendment process.
But it says to consider multiple options for achieving a high school start time 8:00 AM or later, and vote to approve one of them by November 2021. That's sort of where.
Vote to approve by November 2020 for implementation.
Oh, I'm sorry, November 2020, my fault. November 2020, yeah, vote to approve for implementation by November 2020. That's sort of where we are.
And I'm sorry, I'll just apologize. I tried to work in a solution that works for all of our students, or majority of our students, and recognizing the importance of a later, I just couldn't figure out how to get it all in.
At the beginning.
What's that?
Beginning, in recognizing the importance of.
So do you accept that as now the final version of your original motion, or?
I think so, but I, does somebody, is it, is it vote to approve or vote on?
Thank you, that's, that's very different, yeah.
I, I think the mayor just read to vote to approve, is that right?
Yeah.
Because that's what my motion is.
Say it again, please.
Oh, well, you should read it, it's your writing. I care.
In recognition of.
Recognizing the importance of a later high school start time, the school committee will consider multiple options for achieving a high school start time of 8:00 or later, and vote to approve one of them by October 2020 for implementation September 2021.
I think when I read it, I said November.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, November.
Yeah.
Okay, I, that, I'm good with my motion, so.
And there was a second, would you?
I had seconded it.
You seconded it, okay. Member Gold.
Sorry to sound ignorant here, what does vote to approve exactly mean?
One of them will.
It means you're, it gets put on the floor, and there's a vote to, to approve it. That doesn't mean it's gonna.
Pass.
Right.
Not pass, but it, that's, that's, yeah.
Wait, yeah, could you?
Because there's no way, we can't pass a resolution.
That's important to the line.
You know, determines that we're gonna pass something, we can't, you know, we can't really do that, but we can say we're gonna take a vote to approve one of the plans, or eight, you know, to vote to approve a plan, yeah. Again, that doesn't mean that we don't have a 5-5 vote on every one of them, or, I'm not, I think we're gonna vote on something, pass something, but I'm just saying, but, yeah. I don't know that you can say we will approve one, because that, we can presuppose that.
Why are you saying vote to approve versus just vote?
Just vote.
On.
Vote on.
Because I feel like it's misleading or confusing.
Yes.
But do you ever make a, I'd like to make a motion for you to deny my motion, like, no one makes that motion, they make the motion seeking approval of a motion.
No, but none of the.
Yeah, I mean, that's the, I mean, that's the.
It does sound like, when we say, "Vote to approve," one of them means that in the end, we're gonna have one.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Yeah, and that was the intention of some of us, yes.
Vote to approve one of them, yeah, okay.
But it sounds like that, but all the, like, all these votes on here don't say vote, well, two of them do say vote to approve, but, vote to delegate, vote to approve delegating, vote to approve requesting, like, I think we're misleading the public if we said the word approve, so I'm, I guess I'd like to amend the, amend it to say vote on. Can we amend the, what's it called, amend the motion?
You can make a motion to amend, sure.
Sure, a motion to amend it to say, to vote on.
So change the word approve to on.
Yes.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
Okay.
Can we discuss that?
Sure, yeah.
Great. So I just want to understand what the difference, I'm just trying to understand the difference in your, that moved you to make that motion.
I, I want to make sure that the public is aware that it's poss, that they're not thinking that one of the three plans will be approved. I want them to be aware that it's very possible that we're gonna vote and not be able to have, how many people have to vote? Yes? Six? Not be able to have six people say yes to one of those three plans. I think it would be negligent of us to say that we are guaranteeing now that six of us are going to say yes to one of the three plans. So as, I think if we, I would want the public to know that personally, versus mim thinking that we are guaranteeing you that six will say yes to one of the three. That's what it seems to be the difference, for me.
Okay.
Okay, so, anyone have any thoughts? Member Goldman, you look unconvinced.
Yeah, I think, sure, I mean, my opinion is that I'm not interested in voting on things I, that I don't want to approve, I do want, I mean, I feel like it is, I feel like we're using terms like to aspire or intend to, you know, it's just, I just want it to be the way it usually is. It's just my inclination, and I, I'm not guaranteeing anything either, but, yeah.
Okay.
It's just the difference for me.
Could I, could I maybe offer a compromise, sort of? Maybe it's more confusing, but for, for, for an approval vote? How about that? Because that's really, you know, you're, any motion we make, it's, you know, you're seeking approval of the body, so, instead of to approve, or to vote, to vote on, or a vote to approve, for an approval vote, you know?
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
It seems like what's less important to the committee right now is the words we use, and what's more important is whether we are committing to a later start time and committing to one of the plans. I think there are some people here who are saying, we, we want to assure the public that in the fall of 2021, there's gonna be a later start time, and there's, and we will figure out what that plan is, and then there are other folks who are saying, "I don't want to promise that if I don't like the plans." And I think we've, before we choose the words, we've got to decide which of those we're gonna do.
The intention.
Yeah.
Well said, member Levy.
Without having a vote, how do we, how do we, like, how do I say, "I am not comfortable voting to push everybody back a half hour"? I would love it if we made the high schools, the middle, elementary schools start at 8:00, the high school at 8:30, and the middle school at 9:00, but for some reason, the middle school starting latest is rarely offered as an option. And to me, it makes the most sense, from like, a research point of view, from the parents, from they don't have athletics and after-school jobs, like, so when we talk about, like, I'm gonna commit to something, like, I'm not gonna commit to it if I don't know what you're proposing, or if it's a proposal that I cannot get behind because I think it will cause harm. So that's where, I don't know where this conversation happens, but it's not that I don't want to commit to a later start time, but I'm not gonna, I don't, yeah, I don't know how this conversation happens, where we get to the point where we say that we're really committed to making it happen, but I'm not promising that I will if it's a proposal that I think is going to be harmful for students or families.
Member Sarah Vicox.
I, I heard the mayor mention something about we can't tie our hands to voting a particular way in the future, and, am I, did I?
It'd just be odd, I think.
Yes.
It would be an odd thing, yeah.
It almost strikes me that it might possibly be illegal, I don't know. Are there any lawyers in the room? But, so I, for that reason, I don't think we actually can say that we are going to approve any particular plan in the future, or, or even the outlines of a particular plan. We can have a legal requirement from outside to say that we need to pass our budget by a certain deadline, but that's a requirement from outside, that's not a requirement we put on ourselves. So, so for, for this, this would be a requirement we're putting on ourselves, so I, I don't think that, like, I understand the tension that we are in, but I, I think that it's a bit of a moot point, because we can't actually tie our future hands to voting yes on something. We can only assure the public that we want to do something and we're gonna try our hardest. And it can't be through emotion that we can assure them that, we can only assure them that through our words and our actions.
Interesting.
Okay. So then, so then that's closer to taking a.
So I, I would, yeah, vote on is fine, I mean, either way, I think it means the same thing.
So Mayor Nagowitz, can I just point out, in our Code of Ethics that's posted on our Northampton Public Schools website, it does support what member Sarah Vicox is saying in two separate spots, where it says that realize that statements or promises should not be made regarding how she or he will vote on matters that come before the committee, and then make decisions only after all facts on a question if presented and discussed. So if we don't know all of the facts that will make that decision occur, if we don't know how it's gonna impact the budget, how it's gonna impact individual grade students' families, we, that we shouldn't make that decision. So making a decision like that in advance does feel wrong, so.
I mean, I think committing to vote on something by November is pretty strong in and of itself.
Yeah.
Like, there's, like, that says that, like, you're not gonna continue it to the next meeting, you're not gonna kick it to another committee, you're not gonna, you know, like, you're gonna take, it's, it's gonna come up for a vote by November, so to me, that's pretty strong, without having to say you're gonna vote to approve it, but, yeah.
I just have a, I'm comfortable with this, I'd rather us be on the same page. I think it isn't wrong, though, to say, we have had a proposal on the table for a year now, and so I don't think that we're really saying we're, I think it's a gray area with what is the Code of Ethics, because we do have a proposal on the table, and we have talked about it, and we have gotten a lot of feedback, and it is controversial. And so it's not like we're saying we don't really know what we could be voting on, we know a piece of it, and I'm very comfortable leaving that behind, I'm not happy with that proposal either. I, I agree with what you said about the order of the schools, I think there are ways we can figure this out, so I'm gonna just have faith it's gonna work, and I'm happy with the way you've worded it.
I call the question.
It's more like we're calling the question, I mean, we're literally calling the question in November, like, there's gonna be no further debate after November, so.
Can I, oh.
Before you do that, can I say one more thing?
Because the, the one thing that, that does bother me is the piece that keeps coming up here, which is this, this proposal that's been on the table, and I feel like what we said in our workshop, and maybe I'm misremembering, so please help me if I am, was that we were voting no on that one, that we were actually gonna put that one to bed and say that it doesn't work for our community, and we would like to spend the time coming up with a better one. And I just want to get clarity on that, because I think it would help us, and also help the public, who many of you have, have commented to us that, I, I actually haven't heard anybody say, "Please pass this one," I've heard, I've heard a lot of people say, "Please don't, this is really not good for elementary school kids." And so can we, like, that was on the table, can we vote on that one while we also have this resolution to do this other thing?
So right now, we're actually, there's an amendment that we're voting on. There's, we have to finish that.
But in answer to your question, member Levy, once we vote on what we're voting on now, which is an amendment. on now, which is an amendment to a proposal, and then we vote on the proposal, then we could vote to vote no on the proposed thing of moving everything back thirty minutes. So after we take care of this, we could come back to that.
I would need to.
And, yeah.
It's covered under the post.
Exactly.
Thank you, Parliament, Sarah Vicox. Member Buscansky.
I guess I'm just curious at when we can sort of talk about the process, because we've sort of talked very vaguely about referring it to Budget and Property, opening it up, making it a full school committee, you know, lots, we've had lots of discussions in our retreat, and now again tonight, so when can we have that discussion? Because I think that's something we haven't discussed. Like, I have one image of it, that it would keep coming back to school committee. It's not that Budget and Property, though I love the idea of opening it to the whole school, opening the meetings to the whole school committee, I didn't really realize that was an even opportunity. So I just wonder when that, like, I feel like that's just the one thing we haven't tackled, is the process of how we're going to get to these proposals in September, so we could vote on them by November.
So we can try to discuss that a little bit. Member Goldman?
Yeah, that's the clarity piece. I also was wondering about with the amended proposal on the table, about, right, there's the element of when we're going to present viable, the viable plan or plans, when those will be presented by, when they'll be voted on, who will do the work to build the plans, right, and what we do about the plan on the table.
So I think we, I think the motion envisions that we'll have to figure that out, but knowing that the whole thing is going to be completed by November of 2020, and then we'll just have to work our way back to that.
Okay, great.
But the motion that's on the table is to amend the word approve to vote on. That's essentially what Member Gold's motion was, that we weren't, we're going to vote to approve, but we were going to vote on them by November of 2020. Yes?
And I think they mean the same thing. I'm just going to say that. I think.
Okay, well, we still have to vote on it because it's been motioned and seconded, so I would like to call that question, so we can at least be on that.
So all those in favor of the amendment, Member Gold's amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
Of those opposed?
Opposed.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. I believe the ayes had it for the amendment. Any concerns about that? Do we need a roll call vote? Okay, okay. Okay, so now we're back to the main motion as amended.
I think it means the same thing.
That's already made and seconded, to basically approve it with this new language of vote on as amended. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Can you read that again, the motion, the whole thing?
Do you mind if I read it?
Sure. Since you're the actual person taking the minutes, that's good.
Just to get it right, recognizing the importance that a later high school start time, the committee will consider multiple options for achieving a high school start time of at least 8:00 a.m. or later by September 2020, with a school committee vote on one of them by November 2020 for a 2021 start time.
Does that capture it?
So just to clarify, this means we're not locking ourselves into choosing one of the plans at that meeting?
We.
We can vote no on all of them?
Yes, because we're.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
We can't lock ourselves.
As a practical, can I just say, as a practical matter, I don't think it's possible for you to pass a motion now that you couldn't pass another motion to rescind it a later date.
Exactly.
Yeah.
I don't think you're locked in, in any case.
Yeah.
Okay. So all in favor, then, of the motion as spread to us right now, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, excellent. There we go, so we've done it. So now, and now we're still, we still, you know, this is still posted to talk about late start time, so if, Member Levy, you wanted to make a motion to put to bed the other one, you could do that.
I move to vote on the motion that's on the agenda to, I don't even know where it is, to have the late start time pushed, have the start time be pushed by thirty minutes.
Okay, I suppose, yes. So you're making that, actually, you're asking us to approve it, but you're not intending it.
You're not using that word.
I didn't say approve, I said vote.
Okay. All right, that's, I want to second that.
Second.
Okay. So the motion that's before us is a vote on the plan that has been under consideration, you know, since the prior term, prior school committee term, which is, again, to change all of the times by one half hour later. Any debate or discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye loudly now. Okay, I thought I could trick you. All those opposed, please say no.
No.
Any abstentions? Okay, I'm sad to inform you that the motion failed. So that has now been put to bed. So now, the only remaining questions is the process, and would someone, I do think it would be appropriate, because Budget and Property is going to be figuring out what our process is, for somebody to now make a motion to, you know, basically send this thing that you just passed to Budget and Property.
I would like to make a motion to refer the potential options of late start time to the Budget and Property Committee.
Second.
Any discussion on that?
I think rules and policy should really get it.
Is there a way to amend the proposal so that it is articulated within this that there will be open sessions with the full school committees, so that there's full inclusion of the?
I mean, I will make that commitment to you, I don't think I have to put it in the motion, we'll just do that, that's not hard to do, we'll just double post it.
Do you have to get to that on television?
What's that?
Okay.
Did you pause that, didn't you? I'm just kidding. Yeah, so it's all, so we will do that, that'll be my commitment. Okay, so all those in favor of?
Can we just, I wouldn't mind just talking about the process for just a moment.
Sure.
So we refer to Budget and Property, Budget and Property, when will we realistically be able to take this up? Are we?
We set meeting dates going to May, didn't we?
Yeah.
So I think it would realistically, something we could start working on in, at the May meeting? Unless, but then, but wait a second, we already have pesticides on there, and there's vans on there, so I don't know.
Well, I don't think one includes the other. You could have more than one issue on the agenda.
As a member of this subcommittee, I would say we would need to start working on it before May.
I know.
And we're just going to have to have a longer meeting, or another meeting.
Member Buscansky.
Dr. Provost, do you see any other way of?
So can I say something? So there's some part of planning here that it also takes Dr. Provost, myself, and Tammy Lieber, who's our transportation person, to do a lot of effort of this. So we've got massive budget pieces going through April, depending on what happens with the override or not. We have to keep bringing that back to school committee, revising plans, depending on how many, that's going to take quite a bit of work until May, which is going to be budget subcommittee work, and Dr. Provost and I, and administrators, to get together to do that. So that's a large time commitment. And then the next piece of that is, you have to take into consideration, we can start working on that piece of it right after that, but then also trying to develop those plans. Come August and September, we need to be able to take Tammy out of the mix, because she will do nothing but scheduling and routing and bus passes for six weeks. That's all she does, the month of August and the first two weeks of September. We've got to line out the door of people. So whatever plans we develop, we need her work on, it's going to take that to do. So we have to come up with the ideas, I won't say quickly, but that's what it's going to take, and then fine tuning them, I think, is what I see the committee doing, or ideas, but the details of it.
Dr. Provost and then Member Levy.
Just quickly, that I agree completely, which is why I say I don't think we can start performing. And I think, I think Islamic has just given us sort of the, and it really would have to be between May and July, would have to be all the work.
Yeah.
Member Levy.
So I understand that, and we discussed at our workshop, that even though we don't want busing to drive the decision, that's a major component, at least to the previous ideas. It sounds like there may be a lot of creativity that may be brought in, that, before we get to the busing conversation, so I just wonder if there should be an ad hoc committee that, it's, you could say no, but, so that there can be some legwork done before then the busing conversation is brought in.
So the only reason I have that reaction is because every ad hoc committee creates the same thing that she was just talking about. Someone has to organize it, someone has to get everybody together. I think, as an alternative to that, if people have ideas or creative things that, you know, maybe we haven't thought of, that don't necessarily involve busing, feeding that to the Budget and Property Subcommittee would be the way to do it, including, you know, anyone who might have outreach too. I mean, we tried mass, that was a bust, but if there are other groups who you think might have some expertise, and then I would say just feed it to the Subcommittee.
Question, is Tammy Lieber as busy as the two of you are until May? And I only ask that, is it, would it be worthwhile to, because it feels like a lot of sort of the ideas that we hear do obviously involve busing, because we're flipping, or we're, you know, people want numbers on how many people are on the high school afternoon bus, et cetera. So maybe there's just a little bit of legwork that could happen before, just in sort of information gathering and sitting with Tammy Lieber, but I don't want to commit, I mean, I'm asking for your opinion on that.
I think one of the things that might work out best is when we start this, and I like the idea of the full committee having input to begin with, maybe it's that brainstorming session first with the full committee of those ideas, and then have Tammy start working on those pieces while we're finishing up the budget, and we can start developing those pieces. Maybe that's the way to go about to start it off, kick it off. We could do that piece at one meeting first, and it wouldn't be the budget committee going for hours with that, but it'd be that one session with the full committee, ideas, brainstorming session, have Tammy start working on that piece now while we're finishing budget, and then we can get into the budget Subcommittee right after that, of working out the details of what would work, what can we tweak.
Does that sound doable for people? See, that's not even, you have a question?
I have more of a comment. I think my, this is fine with me. I guess what I was thinking was something along those lines in terms of, send it to the three people on a Subcommittee to figure out this plan, which, what you just said is fine, but the, I think, other conversations that need to go along with that, another thing we talked about at our workshop is bringing in some expertise, because if this was easy to solve, we would have solved it by now, and I know Ms. Fallon's mentioned there's other districts in the state, she probably knows who they are, maybe knowing, doing this collection of information, who do we talk to about what's worked, what hasn't worked? Who are the people out there that we could maybe hire as a consultant for a day to help us think about ideas we haven't thought about, if these exist? So I feel like some of that work could be done by a school committee, a subset of us, in parallel with the budget. I completely recognize that you two are up to your ears in work until April or May, but I worry that if we really wait till May, we're not going to get done by June.
I don't think we have to wait till May. I think, I think it would be helpful for the whole committee to throw out that brainstorming ideas, because I think it would be helpful for the budget Subcommittee to also then start fine tuning some of that based on some details. That way, everybody has some input, rather than getting the three ideas, and then somebody saying, well, how about you didn't think of this one? I think doing that upfront might be helpful.
Make a motion, Member Buscansky?
A motion to suspend the rules, because it's 11 o'clock.
Yes. Is there a second? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, great. So, back.
So could I ask if a better way forward would be for us to have another workshop-type brainstorming session, and somebody say when that's reasonable, and then move forward with this? I think the full committee?
I had a thought about that, that just occurred to me while, you know, there was a discussion about, are there any other people we could bring in that might be helpful? One of the unfortunate sort of byproducts of the situation we had at Bridge Street this year with busing is that we've become quite familiar with RJ. Is, you know, basically in charge of busing in the Northeast. I mean, we could certainly schedule a meeting for a time when he could be present, and see if he has any other information, his organization works with hundreds of those works, if there are any other solutions out there, he might be aware of them.
RJ is the busing company?
He's the regional manager for Durham Transportation. Sorry.
So, in a sense.
So this was sort of a conceptual discussion, and there was a motion to refer that we are now still debating, because that's still the motion on the table.
Correct.
So I'd like to have this vote on that, to make the final referral to people feel comfortable where this is headed, when we refer it. Okay, all those in favor of referring, then say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, it's referred. And now we take up the next item on the agenda, which is to approve a resolution brought forward to us by NACE. It is a resolution regarding charter schools, and, darn, I just had it on my screen and it disappeared. Here it is. Yes.
This is my first time, the whole voting after 11 thing. When we vote to extend, is it indefinite? Like, do we have a cap?
Well, the rules were suspended, just sort of generally. I, some bodies have said, I want to extend it for fifteen minutes or whatever, but I think the motion was just to suspend our rules to go past 11.
I think our policy says it goes for a certain number of minutes.
Okay.
Fifteen, maybe?
Could be fifteen minutes. Yes, I don't know. I don't want to spend.
Laura's on the website, she's looking it up.
Okay, great. So while you're doing that, I'm going to.
Don't waste the fifteen minutes.
Exactly.
So this is entitled, "A Resolution Against Charter School Growth in North Hampton, Whereas All North Hampton Students Deserve Fully Funded High-Quality Public Schools That Teach the Whole Child, Provide Enrichment, and Address Social and Emotional Needs in Addition to Other Subjects. And Whereas Commonwealth Charter Schools Often Fail to Serve the Same Proportion of Special-Need Students, Low-Income Students, and English Language Learners as the districts from which they receive students and often use high suspension rates to drive out students they don't want to serve. And Whereas North Hampton overwhelmingly voted in 2016 against the statewide proposal on Commonwealth Charter Schools. Whereas Commonwealth Charter Schools take away vital resources from district public schools. And whereas Commonwealth Charter Schools are often approved over the objection of the majority of community residents. And whereas Commonwealth Charter Schools are not accountable to elected officials, and there is no local oversight as to how charter school officials allocate public funds in these schools. And therefore be it resolved that the North Hampton School Committee opposes any new charter school or charter school expansion that draws students from North Hampton. And therefore be it resolved that the North Hampton School Committee will work with district parents, community leaders, and public education advocates to oppose charter school growth. And therefore be it resolved that the North Hampton School Committee will work with public school officials in neighboring communities to oppose regional charter school growth, regardless of the physical location of any proposal for a new charter school or charter school expansion." Is there a motion to approve that resolution?
So moved.
Yeah.
After we?
And I'll second.
Second. And I wonder, do you recognize to speak to this at all? Sure, yeah, so. It's Chapter Coordinator Andrea Gido, who emailed this to us, and.
Yeah, and I would like to thank the committee for taking up this resolution and discussing it. You are probably the first in Western Mass, hopefully of many, to take up this resolution. It was drafted by a group of our local associations. We have a coordinated collaboration called We Mean, which is Western Mass Educators Action Network. Action Network, which is our, a group of locals, local association, employee associations that get together monthly, and this was a very important issue that we had taken up and are looking to share and bring forward to other districts across the state. And we're hoping that Western Mass will be kind of the, on the leading edge of this, where school committees will oppose such expansions that are devastating our public schools. So thank you for taking up the issue, and I appreciate that, and so certainly if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Yes, so I'm assuming this is a resolution to kind of guide us as a committee and as a district in our actions regarding charter schools. I think the "whereas" is do a good job of kind of identifying the issues and negative impact it has on our districts, and the "therefore's" kind of give some actions to limit the expansion of those negative aspects, but I think we need to add an additional "therefore" regarding the funding mechanism behind the whole problem. Because I think the "therefore's" kind of maybe keep the problem from expanding, but don't do anything to solve the problem. So I think an additional "therefore," something like, "The Northampton School Committee will work with blah, 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 blah," to lobby for a change in the funding mechanisms behind charter schools.
Yeah, I certainly would agree with that.
Okay. So.
Go ahead. Along those lines, like, if there was, I thought there would be, it'd be good, because where that first, the second one where you talk about the fail-to-serv and the DLLs and special, like, therefore, like, move the lobby to ensure that charter schools are held to the same, you know, demographics and expectations as public schools are in rules and policies, because they are anyways exempt from that. So if we can, we're able to hold them to them and make sure that they reflect the bodies that they're actually, so I would just say that, you know, I'd love to see that as well.
Okay.
Thank you for doing this, all of you.
Member Voss?
Thank you, and I, in principle, agree with you, Member Gold, but I think the charter law actually says that they are supposed to do those things, and they don't. So, because they don't, that's where I agree with you, but I don't know if we, there's a conflict, because they are supposed to. But I agree with the comments both colleagues made, I'm just not sure how to implement that in when the law actually says they're supposed to serve the same group. They just don't, and no one's accountable.
And many of those schools claim that they are.
Yeah.
Also.
Yes.
So.
And thank you, this is fantastic.
So, my question would be then, do you want to propose a specific amendment to the resolution? Because that would be in order, if you wanted to add an extra "therefore," or if you want to pass it as is, and, you know, a separate resolution could be, I mean, we've done different resolutions over time, you know, opposing the Chinese expansion, we've done some other ones, so this wouldn't foreclose a different resolution in the future that focuses on specific reform, or endorsing a specific bill that would do reform, so, I don't know, it's up to you, whatever your pleasure. But you would have to make an actual amendment.
Yeah, I guess I'd propose an amendment for an additional "therefore" that addresses the funding mechanism that results in these issues.
So.
Therefore be it resolved that the Northampton School Committee will work with public officials to achieve a more equitable charter school funding mechanism.
Would that be okay?
It's good to me.
Would that be a court call? Yes, okay.
I'll second that.
Okay, so has been a motion made and seconded to just add that amendment, that "therefore." Any discussion?
If we're approving a funding mechanism for charters, in a way, isn't that encouraging the existence of charters? You know what I mean? Like, by saying that we want them to be funded more equitably, is saying we want to still have them, we just want them funded equitably. Versus, you know what I mean? Like, my inclination would be to say, to, you know, the idea of like, that, to recover the inequities of funding somehow, you know what I mean? Like, to be like, to make up for what's been, the impact the inequitable funding has had on public schools, not necessarily make sure we're still funding charter schools just equitably. So that would just be, my concern was saying that, that way.
So do you have an amendment to the amendment?
Read it again?
Possibly to remediate.
Do you have it, Annie?
I have, I think I have most of it. Therefore be it resolved that the Northampton School Committee will work with officials, I don't have something in there to achieve.
Public officials.
Public officials, to achieve a more equitable funding, and I don't know if it was mechanism.
Mechanism. So what about to remediate the inequitable funding?
The current one.
Formula, or some, something like that, to correct the inequity, or?
Or to reform, to reform the inequitable funding mechanism.
Because reform could mean do away with it altogether, and that would be great.
Yeah, cool. So would that be acceptable, would that be acceptable to the original, or the motion? Okay, so, so then changing the language to reform the inequitable funding mechanism, as opposed to what it currently said, which was just to make it more equitable, or something like that? Okay. So are we comfortable with that as an amendment? Parliamentary, are you going to let me let that slide?
Well, what I'm hearing is that it's a friendly amendment, so we don't need to vote on it.
Exactly, good, thank you. All those in favor of the friendly amendment?
No, no.
Amendment? Say aye. I know, I know. All those in, I'm just kidding, all those in favor of the amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, so now we're back to the main motion, as amended. All those in favor of approving this resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you very much.
Thank you all very much. Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. So, next we have a vote to approve use of professional development funds to send a representative to the NSBA, which is the National School Board Association Meeting. And I believe this request comes to us from Ms. Fallon, who would like to attend said meeting, and would, would someone just make a motion so we can put it on the floor? Motion to approve funds? Second?
Second.
Okay. Ms. Fallon?
Which island in Hawaii is?
Oh, no. It's the annual conference being held in Chicago, April 4th through 6th, and it's, it's one of the only conferences that the MASCE does not pay for their division chairs to attend, but it's one that I would love to attend, looking at their scandal, unbelievable offers as far as equity, and it's over 7,000 school coordinators from across the country, and administrators and educators, and it'd be a great opportunity to certainly bring back all the information I could to the committee, although I always end up presenting it at 11 something, so.
And this would be to cover the registration cost, correct?
Yes, registration, so that's the thing, I'm already on the hook for it, because to save money, I did the early bird, and it would have been too late, so the early bird saved $200, but it's still, conference costs are expensive, it's $765 for the conference. We currently have in our account, there was $3,100 appropriated for school committee professional development, and we currently have available 2,450, so I would ask for the 765, and then pay for the hotel out of my, my school committee statement that I spent over and over again.
So, any, any questions or discussions about this? Where is the conference happening?
Chicago.
Oh, Chicago, okay.
Well, why wouldn't, would we, do we not, are we not allowed to pay for hotel lodging? Someone is going to, can professional development funds be used for lodging for travel?
It can be, yeah.
Yeah, okay, so I would.
I think the question, yeah.
So they can be, I just, you know, I'm the only one who's used the money this year, and so I didn't know, there is only one more real opportunity for professional development beyond this, and it's Day on the Hill, and that's $50. So even if I were to pay for hotel expenses, there'd be enough for all 10 of us to go today on the hill. In the account, it was just, I didn't want to be greedy and spend all professional development money on myself.
I would just personally like to have the precedent that if one of us goes to a PD that the school committee pays for, it's not, we're not, personally, I don't know, I don't think we should be spending our money to go to conferences.
Okay, so.
I was saying, like, to prove the funds inclusive of hotel and lodging.
Okay. The motion, the agenda says to send a representative to NSBA, it didn't really say specifically what it was for, so you could certainly authorize that it be for the registration and for the lodging, yeah. And you would pay for the trip.
Yeah, and I already have the receipts for the lodging and the registration.
Okay, so are people comfortable with that as the?
So, are you saying lodging only, or are you saying airfare as well?
I mean, maybe.
I would feel most comfortable with just going lodging, because if I were to use airfare too, then there isn't enough money to cover everybody going to Day on the Hill, and that feels not right. But thank you.
Okay, so lodging and registration. Member Busansky?
I mean, we just do only have a limited amount of professional development dollars, and anything we don't use goes back to the budget, so I think everybody should maybe make decisions that are, you know, what's comfortable for them.
Yeah, if you're, if someone wants, yeah, but.
Perhaps we could approve it, and Member Fallon could decide whether or not she wants to file for reimbursement.
Okay. So, so the motion that was made and seconded was to approve the use of professional development funds allocated in our budget to send Ms. Fallon to the National School Board Association Conference in Chicago.
There was a motion and a second.
And seconded, yes. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. Next, we have a report of the Legislative Liaison from Ms. Fallon.
I had so much to say, and now I'm going to try and say so much less. Just to give you a legislative update, I have worked really hard and really unsuccessfully on a lot of things since we last met. I did write a letter in opposition of the three charter amendment requests that were presented at the Board of Elementary and Secondary Education Meeting in January. I focused a little bit on the Veritas Preparatory Charter School, which is in Springfield, and is the closest to us. However, all three charter expansion requests were approved. Veritas is now at their, they have added an entire high school, they added 334 seats, and now Springfield has hit its cap, as far as the number of charter seats that they have available. I also did write a letter in support of the Special Education Gap Bill that Representative Carrie from East Hampton and Senator Comerford filed. I wrote a letter to the Joint Education Committee, to Representative Alice Peish and Senator Jason Lewis, primarily citing the fact that only two of our six schools in the district actually are at, are aligned with that assumed assumption of 16% of our students being, needing special education services, and I gave them all of the data on the other four schools that are at 24.5%, 20.9%, 24.1%, and 21.2%. And so asked them to please take this in, and also questioned the assumption that those students only need services for 25% of the day, and asked them to just, to please support this bill, and have it be the first step in trying to see what the actual rates of special education costs were versus what the assumed rates were. Unfortunately, that bill, a study order, it was sent to study. So a study order technically allows the committee to study the issue more, but what it really means is that that bill is not going to be taken up this session, most likely, and it kind of kills the bill. So that was bad news. Moving on to federal legislation, I was in Washington DC two weeks ago, and that was even more depressing. So, I went for the National School Board Association's Advocacy Institute, and as part of their Federal Relations Network, and I was, it was a really unfortunate time to be in DC, because the impeachment trial, the impeachment hearings were going on, and then it was the State of the Union Address, so we were only able to meet with congressional aides, which, let me tell you, they were phenomenal, like, so, so well-informed, like, lovely, but even those were, you know, hard to get appointments with. So I did meet with the congressional aides for Congressman Bill Keating, with Joe Kennedy's aide, and with Ayanna Pressley's aide. We pushed really hard, the number one item on the agenda at the national level, and it should be at the state level too, is the Individuals with Disability Education Full Funding Act. Right now, it's got bicameral bipartisan support. There's a House Bill, HR 1878, and the Senate Bill, 866, and they both establish a 10-year authorization of full funding of the individuals, of the federal share of the Individuals with Disability Education Act. It's a lot like the Student Opportunity Act, in that the implementation is gradual over a period of years, so this would have full implementation at year 2029, and that would be at a cost of 40, more than $43 billion. But that's what, on top of what they're spending, they're supposed to actually be paying right now to fully implement this. It has a lot of support, like I said, in the Senate, there's, as of today, 16 cosponsors, and in the House, there are 151 cosponsors. The problem that you run into, it seems like a no-brainer, like, they've already made this commitment, we're not asking them to do anything new, we're asking them to do what they said they were going to do. The problem is, is that there's this Section 3 on the House Bill of the pay-go requirement, it's the offsets, where essentially, these bills end up in the finance committees, and you've got to say, like, "Sure, we'll fund it," but you need to figure out where that money to fund it's going to come from. And so that's where you can't get both sides to agree on where that money is going to come from. It's not that people don't agree that this is something that they should be doing, it's how do they do it? So, that was our primary focus. We also focused on school infrastructure, there's two bills, one of which would invest $100 billion in, to improve the physical and digital infrastructure at private property schools, and that got reported out at the Education and Labor Committee, it's the Rebuild America's Schools Act. While we support the bill, we have problems with the Davis-Blinken provisions, so that was another discussion. And then the Renew America's Schools Act, we were also asking them to support, it would authorize $100 million from the Department of Energy Grant Program for K-12 school districts to make eligible energy efficiency improvements, to reduce energy costs. And then the final bill that we were asking them that was specific to Massachusetts was, every year we ask this, we haven't really made it anywhere, is to repeal the government pension offset and windfall elimination provisions, because they really disincentivize people coming from private sector jobs and moving into teaching jobs, which is particularly impacting us in the areas of teacher recruitment in STEAM and at the VOTEC schools. And so that's really a problem. We're not making much headway, but every year we go and we ask them to do that, so eventually maybe we'll make a dent. I will tell you that the new budget from Trump is problematic, so while we're down there asking them to support the full funding of the IDEA, what they proposed instead, it sounds really good, it sounds like a great soundbite, it's $100 million increased to that, but the reality is, is that unfortunately, the number of students that we're serving is now increased to 7.4 million, and so it's actually a reduction, it's 1% reduction in how they were funding. So right now, we are at, this budget that they are proposing, it would allocate approximately 13% of the costs associated with serving our students with, with, under the IDEA, and once again, it was supposed to be at 40%, so it's a 1% cut, so that's really disturbing. And then the final thing is, we did hear from the Deputy Secretary of Education under Betsy DeVos, who took the opportunity to, and it's also in this budget, to talk to us about the amazing Educational Freedom Scholarships that they're touting, that's a $5 billion investment that will essentially. a $5 billion investment that will essentially transfer resources from public schools to private institutions and religious institutions. And so, the Massachusetts delegation was one of many states that decided to exit early from his speech. I don't know that it mattered. And then, finally, as far as the legislative portion, is the Day on the Hill, is the day that Massachusetts school committee members typically go to advocate for all things education. It's this year, Tuesday, May 5th, at the Grand Lodge of Masons, unfortunately, again. And then we proceed to lunch at the Hall of Flags. It's from 8:30, registration starts until 2:00 PM, it's free to students, if we want to get a group of students to go together, and, and it's, I think it's usually worthwhile, we usually make appointments to see our legislators while we're there, and the lunch is provided by all of, like, not all of, but many of the vocational schools in the state, it's amazing. So if anyone's interested or wants more information, Member Busansky's gone with me many times, I don't know...
Member Coff.
And I think everyone else. And then finally, I know it's late, but can I just tell you very, very quickly about the Equity Symposium? I can wait, I can tell you next month.
There is a limit of five finales that you're...
All right, no, it's fine, it's fine, it's fine. No, it's fine.
Go ahead, go ahead, go ahead.
All right, so the other thing was the Equity Symposium, that was also in Washington, it was identifying, eradicating discriminatory practices, prejudices, beliefs in education policy, and I was able to attend four sessions, they were amazing. Grading for equity, what every school board member should know, I have all the information, hadn't ever thought about it in that way. More than a seat at the table, considering the requirements for equitable partnering between marginalized parent populations and school districts. And then the Abomar County Public Schools presented, we must strive to be anti-racist, and what they're doing to address and dismantle individual institutional and structural racism that exists in the district. The Executive Director of Head Start spoke about how we should view preschool programs as district money, because every dollar spent on a four-year-old's preparation is money that the district doesn't have to spend. And so, going to this was amazing, I have all the information, I'm happy to share it with you, but I was left with this thought, we're doing so much of this work around equity, as far as, you know, the woman from, the Executive Director of Head Start saying, the programs should be aligned, shared, shared professional development, collaborative to be most effective. And that is happening thanks to our community leaders, and all the individuals that got together and worked on the grant, and I think that that's awesome. We are, we also heard from the Commissioner, from the Federal Communications Commission, and she talked about the E-Rate program, and the importance of the one-to-one programs as far as devices, to close the digital divide, and loaning out devices and hotspots, and I think that we're making a lot of progress in closing that digital divide in our district. And then finally, as far as the sessions I attended on supporting LGBTQ students, I think we've made a lot of progress in the policies and culture to support them, but I will say that having attended this, and being one of the only white people in a room where up on the board it says 70% of all school board members are white, and these are all the statistics on the achievement of black students, and this is all the, these are all the problems and inequities that exist, it's on you to fix it, it felt like a huge responsibility, like, I don't know that we're doing enough as school board members to educate ourselves about what we, what we should be doing. Seeing the work that they're doing as far as assessments, and equity checklists, and policy review, and the protocols and procedures to just give an out-of-school suspension to a student in other districts, and the very, very strong anti-racist statements that they have for every aspect of their school, for the Abomar, Abom, I can't even say it, Abomar School District, made me think that we could be doing more, and that we should be doing more, so that's where I'm leaving that report.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Now we go on to the Rules and Policy Subcommittee.
Me too.
We have a first reading on a policy about student activity accounts.
I think we have to vote to, I, I...
So now, I pulled it up, so the rule does not, I think where we're confusing is the whole break of 15 minutes can be called, but what the rule actually says is that 11:00 PM, all meetings will be adjourned unless a two-thirds majority of the members present vote to continue. If a meeting is recessed, it must be reconvened in a week.
Yeah, so I think we're...
So we could go on forever?
Yeah, no.
Are we allowed to, are we allowed to make a motion to skip things?
Certainly, yeah. The next item is a first reading, so we don't actually have to discuss it, it just has to be on one of our agendas. And then, there are second reading and votes on two other issues, which those could certainly be continued, then there's just a vote to refer. So, there's a first reading, a second reading, a vote, and then a request to refer a policy, so those are...
So, can we, can I, can I move to postpone the first and second readings, and then I would like to have that other policy referred to us.
Sure. So, motion to postpone, essentially item Q.
Right.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, any abstentions? And now we're to number R.
Okay, and I would like to make a motion to refer Policy GB, which is, I wrote it down, sorry.
It's Policy GB. That's all.
Unrepresented employee.
It's vacation for non-represented.
Yeah, so rules and policy.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's referred, now we move to the Business Administrators' Report.
I can make it real quick, it's in your packet, there's some deficits, I'm working with the administrators, make some transfers. I have one gift from Bridge Street PTO for $680 for the Nature's Classroom, and there were two warrants that were also included in your packet that your representative signed. Personnel report, so I will just keep on moving. I have 17 new hires in January and three separations. Any questions?
Any questions about that Business Report or Personnel Report? Okay, now we move to the Superintendent's Report.
Thank you. I want to start by addressing the racist graffiti that was discovered Wednesday morning at JFK. I want to state unequivocally that this is completely unacceptable and in direct contradiction to our district core values. Make no mistake, this blatant display of hate and bias will be thoroughly investigated, and consequences will follow for any students who are involved. Everyone, everyone has a right to feel welcomed, cared for, and respected in our schools. This type of behavior is hurtful to both our students and our staff, and I want to talk tonight about my intersection, my observations about the intersection of student and staff mental health. We teach our students to have a growth mindset and to have emotional resilience, but if we allow our own emotional reserves to run dry, then how will we fill up the students? First, I think it's important to understand that our young people are hurting. Throughout the first half of this year, more than 19 of our students have required psychiatric hospitalization, and more than 50 of our students are currently homeless or involved in foster care. As the host community for Safe Passage, Grace House, and the Kutchen Center, we serve youth and families who face a number of crises. We've also been selected as the host community for Pride House, a new residential facility serving LGBTQ youth who have been placed in the care of DCF and/or DMH, and we look forward to welcoming these students into our schools. Students from all of these populations have experienced adverse childhood experience, which place them at risk for difficulty in school. Then it's also to important to understand how student trauma can impact faculty and staff. There's a phenomenon known as compassion fatigue, it's also known as vicarious traumatization or secondary traumatization, and it's the emotional residue or strain that comes from working with those who are suffering the consequences of traumatic events in their lives. It's often cumulative, and it can contribute to the phenomenon known as burnout. Initially, it was thought that only workers with chronic exposure to traumatic events, such as first responders, are susceptible to compassion fatigue, but now we know that teachers and administrators are at risk as well. Northampton was one of 69 Massachusetts schools and districts and charter schools participating in the District Leaders Network Meeting on School Climate, Student Support, and Family Engagement. It was the largest gathering in the history of the District Leaders Network. The response was so overwhelming, they needed a new venue, and the topic of the day that attracted so many school leaders was educators' compassion fatigue. In the past several weeks, you should know that I've brought in no less than three clinical service agencies to assist our employees with their own mental health in situations that have happened throughout, just, many schools throughout the district, and I'll say that I was a part of all three of those groups, so this is something that's impacting administrators as well. We know that almost half of teachers quit within their first five years, and I suppose we might have considered this to be an inevitable part of the sorting process required to figure out who really has what it takes to be a teacher. But increasingly, I'm worrying about the other half, the half that makes it past the first five years. I'm worrying about the well-being of those tenacious educators. In an era of elevated student need, ever-increasing accountability, and relentless multi-channel electronic communication, I wonder how long they will find the work to be sustainable. You've seen a draft of my budget proposals for FY '21, so you know that I'll be recommending shifting resources to support the emotional needs present within our district, both students and staff. In fact, about a third of the proposals align with one or more of the four DESI focus areas for supporting social, emotional learning and safety. Getting back to the District Leaders Network, the final, the final activity of the day had a Wizard of Oz theme. We were asked to gather in groups, either as scarecrows, or woodsmen, or lions, depending on whether we wanted more cognitive understanding of vicarious trauma, or whether we needed to work on our own social, emotional needs, or whether we needed to screw up our courage to become strong advocates for social, emotional needs of our students and staff. I joined the lion group. As you've seen, I'll be advocating to make some shifts for our funds, to focus specifically on student mental health and staff mental health, and that can be controversial, it could certainly be controversial in our community. I would just, I'll tell you, there'll be critics for sure, and I would ask you all to take heart, I'm sure this team can ride all of that out. I need more lions, I need more people who can help me advocate for the needs, because I do sense that this is really critical for our staff, and so I'm just asking you to be my partners in that work, as I, as I work to try to shore up what I see as a staff that's really under a lot of pressure. That's my report.
Thank you, Superintendent. We have future business meeting dates, our next budget meeting is Thursday, February 27th, here at 6:45 PM in the JFK Community Room, that's the second meeting of this month.